This is the only...
Oh.
We just had to call when the bucket was empty, too.
Good evening and welcome to the February 15, 2018 zoning board of appeals meeting. All members of, all full-time members of present with exception of Mr. Orsiani who is out on business. So, Mr. Fallon is going to sit in as an alternate in his place, okay? The first thing on the, I'm gonna bypass the public hearing for the ZBA's fee schedules for right now. Gonna go to approve the minutes for December 6th, which was executive session. Did everybody get a chance to read them?
Yep.
Yes.
You can abstain. Okay, all right, is, were there any corrections or anything? Did anybody see anything? No, I'll entertain a motion.
So, motion to approve the minutes for January 18th, 2017.
No, no, no.
Oh, I'm sorry. Executive session minutes for December 6th, 2017.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so the vote is four, zero, one.
One abstention.
Okay, all right, that takes care of that one. Okay, now, the minutes for January 18th, any quid pro quo's?
No.
So, mode, okay, I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Do you have a second, anybody, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, that's done. Okay, so those two things are taken care of. Okay, building inspector, you're up, buddy.
We have the one abstention, right?
Yeah.
Again, on this, okay.
Yeah. Okay, the building inspector is here for his monthly report on 92 North Main Street and any other issues that he needs support to know about. Good evening.
Building gentleman.
All yours. Do this with your best shot.
Okay, essentially, nothing has changed since last month when I was here. I did go to the site a while ago and I have a list of what I thought was deficiencies that need to be addressed before final CO. For the building, last building, A building could be done.
Okay.
As you guys requested.
Okay, give everybody a minute to look at it, please. Okay, so basically what happened is, there's a letter here from the building inspector that was sent to Mr. Ali on the 29th of January. And basically it states that the final certificate of occupancy cannot be issued at this time. The site work for the project has not been completed as determined on the comprehensive permit dated February 4th, 2016. And then it also states that a bond can be posted with the town of West Boylston as noted on page 26 of the comprehensive permit. The permatee shall provide the town with a bond or certi in a form mutually agreed upon by the town and the permatee and in an amount to be determined by the board, the board, the zoning board of appeals, in consultation with the building inspector based on the permatee's reasonable estimate of the costs to complete. Okay, so, what I'd like to do is to, if it's, if it's agreeable with the board, is to take this letter with all these things that need to be done and send them off to VHB and have VHB do a cost certification, a cost estimate, and see what, what actually it's gonna cost to have these things done. And then that, then when it comes back, then we can determine on how much bond we need to get. Does anybody have any questions or concerns? Mr. Wick is, anything?
No.
No? Mr. Field?
Seems reasonable.
Okay. How come it was not done earlier?
What?
VHB.
Cause we just got this.
Oh, okay.
They had a February 13.
Yeah. It looks like a, you see a...
Okay, Mr. Ali.
Good evening, Mark Pedrosi. But I see David a lot, I don't see anybody else. Another gentleman just drives through. The reason I'm here is about the fence in the back. The proposed fence in the back, in the, it's like, yeah, the property, it's in the back of the hill. It's all ledge. And here...
Before you go on?
Yeah.
92 North Main Street.
Yeah.
It's a 40 feet project.
I know where it is.
Okay. Just wanna make sure.
Thank you, yeah, appreciate it.
What we did was additional to the project, we added up a gazebo.
Yep.
You people must have seen it. And we, on the project, we added up a gym, which is worth almost $60,000 in gym.
Okay.
And yoga room. And we have a pet facility here so that we don't have all the pieces of the...
You have a dark park?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's on the side of the, of building.
Is it fenced in dark park?
It's fenced in. When she dark park, it's not open for public.
No, just for the...
Public, we can try, have, put a ticker on it.
It even has a fake fire hydrant.
Fake fire hydrant?
Oh, yeah.
It's actually a real fire hydrant.
It's pretty sharp.
I'm good, Inspector, thank you, Inspector.
And the reason what I'm talking to you is here we have DCR's fence already.
Okay.
DCR property is fenced already. And it shows on the top of the hill and the bottom, I cannot do it because I have no storage. The way they were, it was designed, I was opposing doing the approval itself, it's going to be tough to do fence. Raj should know it and David, you were, I think David was not there, but rest of the people were there about the fence situation here.
Yeah.
Because I do agree here in fencing, which has been done around the ponds, all the ponds have been fenced and on the playground, I agree to fence it. I have a dark, dark park which is fenced separately. This section of fence, I want to see if the board can relieve me on that thing, otherwise it's going to be of no use.
In other words, you don't want to put it in?
I don't want to put it in. It is a, it is a site where you can tell that it's quite inclined there because it's all ledge.
Right.
And there's DCR land behind it?
Yeah.
And there's already a DCR fence?
DCR fence up here, then this is my land and DCR, this is all wooded, then we have DCR fence on the back side.
Okay. No, the problem is, it's a ledge, it goes slope, right?
Yes.
So, if you don't have a fence, so, what about the stones?
No, stones will not come. It's a two and a half, we had a plan approved for two to one slope. You must have seen it, that there is almost two and a half slope. What we did was, we went back and filled it down so, to make it, initially when this project was approved, it was one to one slope.
Right.
Which was not good, I think the board also had an argument, then we went to two to, two to one. It's almost two, some places we have three percent and some places we have two and a half percent. We don't have two to one either.
And the reason, and the reason that the slope was done this way is because they had to go into that lot three.
Yep.
And VHB made a comment on that and they agreed that that would be the best...
What are the VHB says about the fence?
I don't know, I haven't, this is the first I'm seeing of it.
Yep.
What a, do you have any quid pro quo's? I mean, I know that this is on the plan.
Yes, it is on the plan, but it really, it really doesn't serve much of a purpose unless, unless people were concerned that maybe the children would go climbing up there or something.
The problem we have is, the fence is proposed on the top of the hill and the children want to climb, they'll come all the way on the top.
Okay.
I had this discussion during the approval, but everyone was ignoring my argument on that.
So, you're talking about that this fence is on top of it?
Is on top of the hill.
Top of it. So, it's at the top of the slope?
Okay. So, it's not serving its purpose. This side I needed for snow showing. Winter was good, we had enough stores, storage place everywhere, we didn't have anything to haul it out or anything. We had enough parking and everything worked out really good.
Does this side of the fence over here provide any, you know, privacy to the Stillwater Heights folks or anything? Oh, it's a chain link.
Chain link, three to one, they don't even see that.
So, they'll be looking way over.
Okay.
I think, I think, you know, during the com, uh, comprehensive permit, there was a reason why we suggested a fence. The reason being, it's for the safety. So, if you are not, if you do not want to put the fence now, I think, you know, it's better we should consult with the VHB.
Yeah, you can consult with the VHB, safety wise, it doesn't make sense to put it...
Before we make any decision. Have you, have you been up there to look at this? Okay, do you...
You were there six days watching.
All right, do you, I just want, I've been asking the building inspector for his opinion. Do you see any problems with them not putting this fence in? I mean, I understand it's on the comprehensive permit and we need to go by that because if not, then the board would have to vote. Okay, I will send this off to VHB to get their determination, but I'm also asking you as the building inspector, do you see any problems in this? In other words, is this a safety issue if he doesn't put the fence up?
No, it's, it's a added safety, right? So, what if, if the children goes up to the hill, goes to the woods? So, if there is a fence, that will prevent them to go into the woods, right?
Depends on the kids.
Yeah.
If they, they can, you know, but, I, I totally agree, if there is a fence, we can always go back and argue that it's a fence. We can always argue, you know, there is a fence. There was a fence, the kid jumped on the fence. But if there is no fence, then it's a liability. I don't know, that's, if I remember, you know, it's been a while for the comprehensive permit.
Liability is, VHB had a reach with it, but the board was very thing and it was left in between the discussion, hard discussions, what we had.
Yeah, if I recall, if I recall, that's the reason, you know, for the safety.
But the safety purpose, this is not serving any free purpose.
Kids can, kids can...
Where is Stillwater Heights? Where is that street compared to this?
Up here.
It's up here? Okay, what is, there's nothing back here?
This is DCR land.
It's all DCR.
This is our land and this is DCR land. DCR land starts right here, then it goes straight into that. This is the parcel, right?
Okay, so what does, does the board feel that, you know, listening to what the building, do you, do you think we should ask, go, well, we should ask VHB?
So, what is the reason you do not want to put the fence?
It doesn't serve the purpose and it's ledge.
You can put a ledge, you can put a fence on the ledge, right?
Yeah, it will go in and climb.
Into the...
The slope goes this way.
Yes.
So, if I put this one also, it's not, so, if a rock falls on, proposing hypothetically, we're telling if the rock comes down, the fence will hold it. The speed of rock which comes down will go through the building, if that sign rock comes down.
No.
It has done, it has happened in the past in one of the projects, I know it. Fences are going to help, safety wise, liability wise, if you're talking, this is not a liability issue, it's an individual person's liability to take care of it. It's not, two to one slope is allowed in building code. We don't need a fence or a retaining wall for it.
Okay, so this is the parking lot, this is the end of the parking lot, right? Okay, how far from there would the fence be? How far, what's the distance?
Uh, what's the scale here, is it gonna do 40, it's all over 40 feet back, I don't know.
So, 40 feet from this lot, from the end of the parking lot, 40 feet back is where the fence would start?
Somewhere, 30, 40 in between.
Right, cause we...
Somewhere here, 40, it's 30, some places it's 20.
Yeah. Or here, closest one.
I think, you know, it's, it's better to consult with the VHB.
Okay.
Then, you know, let's take a look at also, then we can get a decision.
That's fine. I'm gonna, I'm here...
No, no, I need to scan it.
Right now, I need to place a bond and see what the bond number is going to be. It's just some trees and some stop signs and this fence, that's all I have up in the comprehensive permit.
All right, so let me, let us, let the board, we'll reach out to VHB and consult with them, we'll send them this. If you could write up something for us, you know, that you went out there and saw this and what your opinion is, we'll send that all along and see what VHB comes back with. And if worse comes to worse, maybe we can have them come to our next meeting and have them discuss what their opinion is, if they, they can't do it in writing. So, we'll either go either way with that. Does that sound fair to the board?
Yep.
Charlie?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Fallon?
Yes.
Raji?
Yeah.
You okay with that?
Definitely.
All right, so let's, can I have this? Okay, all right, so let's, let's, let me, let us reach out to VHB and meanwhile, the building inspector will write up a, a thing about, you know, about this, what his opinion is, that he's gone out there and, and looked at it and we'll get everything all set up and then hopefully we should have an answer for the next meeting. Which is March 15th?
15th, yeah.
March 15th.
I have another question.
Yep.
If they said a bond, what type of, type of a bond are we looking at? Tri-party agreement?
We haven't, we haven't even discussed that yet, so that'll be...
If you discuss it, so I can have the bond next time?
By that time, we'll have, we'll have all the answers. We hope to have all the answers, right? Hopefully?
I was told cash bond.
Okay, all right, but I wanted just to make sure that everything, that we're gonna have everything or...
Usually what it is, is that all requirement is either a tri-party agreement or a cash bond or insurance bond.
Okay, well, we'll have to, we'll have to discuss that with the town administrator in the board of selectmen.
Yep.
And see how, what they want, what they would like us to do. But we're the ones that are gonna set the amount, so, and, so. Toby, let's put Mr. Ali on the agenda for March, okay?
Okay.
We'll, we'll have to determine the time afterwards because I know we're gonna have, we're probably gonna have two, at least two public hearings.
Yeah, we have two other ones, so...
So, we'll, we'll just see how we fit that along.
No, not really.
No? So, we'll, we'll bring this up on March, on March, March 15th, okay?
All right.
Okay.
Thank you, gentlemen.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Building Inspector, anything else?
No, sir.
Okay, I want you to sit right there, okay? Is Mrs. Monsell here? Okay, and Mrs. Miola?
Yes.
Okay, all right. You can bring up a seat, Sue. All right, just have a seat. Bentley, could you move slide over a little bit, please? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. First of all, introduce yourself and your name and address so that Toby can hear it.
Natasha Monsell, 79 Malden Street, West Boylston.
Okay, so, this has been something that's been going on, there should be, there's something in our, in our, um, okay, it's about 62, it's gonna say 62...
Central Street.
Central, Central. All right. Okay, there's been a lot of communications between Mrs. Monsell and the building department and, well, I'm just...
Did you want the information that I had?
Yeah, I got, I got this, we have this, we even have it in color.
Oh, nice, that's beautiful, thank you.
So, I'm gonna let you explain...
Okay, basically, in 2009, the property came up for sale. My husband and I live in town, we have a security business, so, in the winter, we wanted to move closer to our home. And so, we, Sue was, that's how I met Sue, she was selling the property, so I wanted, was concerned that it was a business property, business owned, we could move our business into it. And so, it had a, it had a, a business on the second floor already, it was a massage studio. So, she brought us down to see Mark Broder. And so, Mark Broder confirmed it was business owned, we could do whatever we wanted, you know, with it, basically, whatever was within coding and highest and best use, which I don't know what that means, but, um, he confirmed it was a business zone.
Okay, let me just start it, just so that everybody on the board knows, especially Mr. Kingsley, Mark Broder at the time was the building inspector.
I know.
Okay, I just wanna make sure that everybody knows.
Okay, so we basically told him what we wanted to do with the property. It was a two-family, we wanted to convert it to a three, fix it all up, try to keep it as best intact as possible using existing hardware and things that were in the barn and it was loaded with stuff, and then move our business in the barn down the road. He confirmed we could do that, he gave me the map, he wrote highest and best use, again, I don't know what that means, but he said it was a business zone, it's in the historic business section. So, I went to the library to find out what the historic business section was, that's where I got all those pictures. I found out that the property had a funeral home in it in the early 1900s. And the next door neighbor was a blacksmith that had burnt down, it took the second floor off the house and was rebuilt later. So, that was conveyed to me. So, I got this picture from them and you can see our house, or our office, there, and that was the blacksmith. So, we went and did the three-family and went back down there in 2015 to make sure it was listed as a three-family and I was being properly taxed and everything and I got the business own, I mean, the property card, and it showed it was still business owned. So, now, we're ready at this point to do the barn because we did the landscaping, we've done, the whole house has been complete, top to bottom. And so, we had some builders come last fall and they came down to see Bentley, or one of them did, and Bentley said we couldn't go into the barn, because that's what we were looking at to do because it's a residential zone. So, I immediately called the building department and set up an appointment, I came back, I came down here in October, I met with Bentley and Cheryl. Cheryl went and talked to Diane Peterson in the assessor's office who said, "I don't know how that zone got changed, I will put it back." And Bentley said, "Let's talk to the zoning board." So, that's where we are today.
All right, where on this map is your property? If you can just come up and show us so that I can see, because I'm a little confused. That's your property right there, okay?
And that's the...
That's the Duncan Giles Machine Shop.
And that's Darby's.
Darby and everything.
Oh, yeah, I know Darby's well. Okay, and these are all other businesses, too?
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
But, I mean, even in the 1830s to 1908, this whole street was part of the re...
This is a mall floor.
And that was shopping in the mall since 1908. So, this is all, I mean, it was all...
Been business forever.
Before even anyone was down in the, the reservoir.
Nice work on the house, by the way.
Oh, thank you very much. But the barn is falling down. So, I have... So I have it cribbed up, it keeps sinking, I'm just trying to salvage it, it's a beautiful piece. The right side of it, I, I can't salvage because it's old.
Okay, now, I also understand that the insurance company is.
That's another issue, they gave me a waiver, but not for like a six month or an eight month waiver, that's why.
And what, what are they saying about it?
They, it needs to be fixed, it's, you know, they don't wanna insure it.
They won't insure it?
No, because we, and we have, we use part of it for storage, storing our, our product and such.
Okay, so what, what are you trying to do to the barn?
I want to, I want to fix it, or, um, some of it I'm gonna have to replace, there's no way, it's just so far rotted, but we would like to put our businesses, we wanted to put our business in there and move upstairs eventually, we wanna retire there. So that was our kind of goal, uh, until all of this happened.
Okay, so you're gonna live in the house, but the barn is gonna be the business?
We'd like to put the, yes, the business in the barn.
Okay, alright. And the barn is gonna have to be torn down and rebuilt?
I don't know if, I don't, I don't wanna have to do that if I don't have to. I mean, I have to get builders in there to say what they can salvage.
Basically, salvage what you can.
I'd love to salvage what I can, I mean, I, I'm all about that, but, um, I don't know at this point what I can do with it. But that's the area I'd like to have my business.
Bentley, have you been out to look at this barn?
I have not.
Okay. Have you been out to this property at all?
No.
Okay.
I was never asked to either.
You know, we'll come anytime you'd like.
Will you ask me more for anything?
Alright, any, any questions? That I'm gonna let the board, Charlie, anything? Start with your, you have any quips or cause, any questions?
What are you gonna, what are, what are you gonna do there? What is that business?
It's a security business, we install video surveillance systems, access control, biometrics, things like that.
And how many people come in there to see you every day?
We don't have a, it's not a traffic, high traffic business, we have our employees, um, we have about six technicians, but they're on the road, and then in the offices, four of us. So there's not a lot of, it's not high traffic. I have my brother on the third floor, my best friends on the second floor, we're not, you know, it's not a crazy area.
Most of your business probably takes place at client sites.
Exactly, like, we do a lot of, um, uh, lower income developments and condos, hospitals, things like that, so they're not coming to us, we're going to them.
Does that parking lot, when you look at the place on the left, is that your parking lot?
No, that's Duncan's, that's part of his.
That's Duncan?
Yeah, yeah, that's his.
Can you use that?
I don't use that, no. I would, I mean, I'm sure he'd let me if I needed.
So you're up close to it, yeah.
I'm right on, yes. But the barn is in the back, it's not, the house is up bordering his lot.
So it's gonna be used mostly as residential?
Alright, we have, uh, right now, it's a three-family, but our business is on the first floor, it's an apartment, so we're kind of, you know, we weren't planning on long-term being in an apartment, so that's why we wanted to fix the house first, it's taken eight years, and then go to the barn, I mean, there's a lot we did.
And then all your business is gonna be in the barn?
Yeah, right now, we just use it for storage.
Mark?
So, um.
Okay, Mark Frieden is, is a member of the planning board, okay? I need some, I want you to look at this.
From me?
Okay, I don't know if you heard everything that she said, but.
I've been doing it.
Okay. This is her barn, okay?
Yep.
All of this, she was saying that all of this property at one time is all business.
Ninety-seven, right?
Oh, it was what?
It's all business. When, when she went to see, uh, Broder in two thousand and ten, yeah.
Darby's is right there.
Darby's is right there, everything, everything in this, this shade is a business.
Dance school's over here.
Yeah. And this is, um, this is, uh, Delise?
Yeah.
Okay.
This is right where we're doing our building zoning stuff.
Yeah, that's the back door. Yeah. But see, somehow my zone got changed, that's the problem. From two thousand fifteen to two thousand seventeen, I can show you all of the, the, the zone.
No zones were changed.
Okay, that's what, that's what Diane was saying, she's like, I don't know how that happened, I can change it back, so. Which would have been great, I wouldn't be sitting here right now. So I have the property cards from when I bought it, I went down to market, he gave it to me, it's business owned. And then in two thousand fifteen, when I came back after I did the three-family, I just wanted to make sure it was listed as a three-family and still listed business owned.
All I'm saying is zoning hasn't changed, but I don't know what the properties are right there.
But everything.
Well, now it's, it's listed as residential, now I'm ready to do the barn, and, and Bentley said, no, it's residential.
Is it 'cause, is it 'cause part of the house is in a residential zone?
Did that screw the property?
I, I don't know what happened, Diane thought it just got inadvertently changed, she said, I'll put it back, I don't know what happened. It just got changed.
This is all business, that's all business.
Well, but certainly it's business up here.
But it looks like.
These are business.
But it looks like everything that's in this, in these shades is all business. There used to be businesses.
That was, it was a funeral home, but that was, I mean, in nineteen teens.
On the map, there's a.
This being.
I don't know, I can, I can only give you, this is what Mark had given me, and he said, it's business owned, it's the highest and best use, and we were in there saying, I want to do a two or three family, and he said, you can do the two or three family, and I don't know what that was, but I just. Basically, it's a historic business. What would you want to call it?
Uh, I don't know back when the zoning line.
No, I don't mind it, that's why we. But if you live this way, it'd be in two thousand and nine, and it's business owned.
Yeah, that's probably. But I don't know why anything would have changed.
It's business owned, and then two thousand and eight.
Well, I guess the question is, does she need a variance?
That's right.
In order to, to.
Well, what she can do is, and.
What it is, maybe she doesn't need any.
What, what she can do is, is she can apply for a home occupation.
Her zone is.
But.
Which would be.
Home occupation.
I don't think so, I don't like it, yeah.
It would be just.
No. Hey, before going to that, so my understanding is, you know, it was on a business zoning.
Yeah.
On the paper.
On the assessor's.
Assessor's paper.
Yeah.
But we never seenos it, we never ever, the town or the assessor's office never ever changed the zoning for a, for a long, long, long time. So that means the zoning is the same, but somebody in the paper, they have changed it.
For the assessors of.
Assessors of, why they changed it. How it's, how, how it's been changed. The way, for me, you know, the way to rectify is, you know, the zoning district. So if that, that's in the zoning district, so if it is a business zoning district, apparently those things comes under business zoning, right?
Right, and if it's across of the property too, there's some leeway, like, I think it's thirty feet either way.
Yeah.
In case you're.
I don't know what it is, I'm just saying that it's been business owned since two thousand nine to two thousand fifteen. When I came here in two thousand seventeen, to say, why it's residential, Diane Peterson said, I don't know what happened, I don't know why it would change upward or backward.
So I guess the question is, what do we need to do to let you get on with your.
That's what I'm trying to do. We put the property into the.
Okay, so the house is re-martened.
The house is re-martened, everything, everything, insulated, sided, roofed, everything is.
It was really falling apart.
One line.
It was really.
I live around, I live around the campus, we just walk online.
And we just finished the landscape, we put all that rock down.
Who's living in the house?
I have my brother on the third floor, my friend standing on the second floor, and I'm on the first floor with my daughter. It's an apartment, it's.
Alright, so if you're, if, if you're allowed to put your business in the barn, are you still gonna maintain, are you still gonna live on the first floor?
I don't live there, I live on. No, I'll, I don't know, I mean.
But you own the property?
Oh, I own the property.
And you want to retire there?
And I wanna retire on some property, correct, I wanna settle up in Malden and get kids out.
So, I think, you know, those are all material. The issue, we need to look at it, whether the zoning is, what was the zoning? What is the zoning? And if it is the business zoning, it's a business zoning, that's it. Someone changed the card means, you know, that's not.
Or it's show G I S.
So, I think that's.
Oh, it's gonna show residential, it's on our line, we can show, show it in our line, it's definitely residential, yeah.
Really?
But how close is it, does it split the property or?
No, it just says residential, it looks identical to what I had here.
Residential.
Yeah, because when I called, I said, I just had a builder come to me and say that, I said it was residential, and I had. He said, go online. I didn't go online.
It's business.
But I did look at it.
I wonder, I'm, I think so too. I mean, should we, should we go on, is there a zoning map?
We're just walking on.
Okay, that'll be, 'cause I talked to, uh, to Karen Paray, and I asked her about, you know, if she could pull up something, you know, what the G I S showed in two thousand and ten, two thousand and fifteen. She said that the zoning is, has not changed.
Yeah, I'm wondering if, she recently updated her, the G I S sort of data, and I'm wondering if that might have.
Shifted things.
Something shifted, something is.
But that was just an update like, I don't know, for the census, I don't know exactly what they.
I don't know, I just know, I just know in two thousand seventeen, in the fall, it was, it was listed as residential. But in two thousand and fifty, in August, it's still showing business. Two thousand and nine is showing business.
See, the thing, the thing that really is frustrating for me is, is that in good faith, you know, she went to the building inspector, no offense Bentley, this is before your time. She went to the building inspector, and he is the zoning enforcement officer and the building inspector. And he told her that this was business, zoned business.
Uh huh.
So, you know, and there's all these other businesses in that area. And this, at one time, this property was a business. And I understand that, you know, from use to use, you know, that it, it can't be grandfathered, but, you know, it just bothers me, the fact is that all of these other businesses are there. Her property was a business at one time. In good faith, like I said, she went to the building inspector, the building inspector informed her that this was business zoned. And I believe, if I understand it correctly, and you'll correct me if I'm wrong, that, that was the main reason that you bought the property.
That's the only reason.
The only reason that she bought the property.
Because I already had a property in Worcester that I sold to help me.
Buy the property.
Yes, so I, I was only, that's the only reason why.
Can you look up sixty-two central?
Yeah, I'm, I'm seeing it, but.
Looking at the, the.
It's right here on the, on the map, and it shows all, it's all in this pink zone, but I'm, I was just looking for the legend to say, to see if it's.
Yeah, go to, we'll see, so if it's in the pink zone.
I'll wait next morning.
Yeah, your, yeah, the zone map's on it.
A machine shop, and then.
Pink is business.
Oh, pink is business, yes, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay.
Bentley, what, what did, what did, what did Cheryl, how did Cheryl show us to look up where, what the colors were?
Well, on, on the zoning map I have here, it shows pink as business.
Pink is business.
Are you in pink? Yeah, I'm in pink over there.
Pink is business.
Okay, so we're saying that's all business.
That whole strip is business.
This is, like, this is actually Darby's.
Right, it's in the business.
No, that's in yellow, she's right here.
Darby's is in the residential zone, she's in the business.
This is her ninety-seven, this is hers.
Yeah.
Well, this is.
I mean, it's showing all. Oh, oh, no.
Well, this is the whole town, this is zoomed in on, like, that's your house.
Yeah.
There's Darby's and the.
Oh, but probably over there then, that's probably.
So if the G I S is showing business, then it's gotta be business.
Pink is business.
But this, this color here, this little rectangle, triangle, says business, and then the yellow hatched. What, what, that's, that's yellow with red stripes. And yellow is general residence.
Okay. Okay, so this is all general residence, and anything in the pink is all business.
So you're in the pink?
I think it's the other one.
Oh.
Just go over by, the legend here, you can tell where this spot is, the pink spot?
Yeah.
And it's that, it's that triangle, but, but this kicks down right here, kinda comes over, whatever, that full shape.
Alright, so she's, so the business zone.
And fake. This is the business.
Business.
The yellow is general residence.
Business cuts through the electrical place, and she's just on the other side of it.
No, this is residential.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying though, but we have, we have businesses here.
That's a machine shop right there.
I know.
That's me, that is, uh, that's that whole, that.
It used to be the cabinet shop.
Yeah.
Yeah, the post office.
Yeah, exactly. And then the art place, yeah, and then, um.
So I don't, I don't know what changed.
Yeah, and this one shows a totally different map.
Do you remember, do you remember what Cheryl showed us as far as to get the, the color codes over here?
Um, legend somewhere.
Conservation?
We do have public hearings.
General residence.
Turning the color. So this yellow was business.
Yeah, I mean.
Whatever, general residence, yeah.
There. We do have public hearings.
Okay, alright, we're gonna, we're gonna have to do some more research on this, and we'll have to get back to you. Um, we'll work with the building inspector, the board will.
Actually, I was, I was talking to Karen, because there might have been just a computer operating through this.
I think that's what it sounded like, what she was saying was, I'll just put it back.
Okay.
Well, yeah.
No, I'm, I'm talking about the zoning.
Yeah.
Okay.
From Diane.
So let's, let's just table this until next month, and meanwhile, will the building, no, she doesn't need to do anything, other than the fact is, is that we're gonna have to find out because it's saying, you know, I know what the building inspector told you, but now it's showing that it's, it's actually zoned resident, general residence.
And has it run a business there continuing?
Well, there was, it was a funeral home, there was, there was a business when I bought it, on the second floor, it was a massage spa.
And right, and now, I mean, is it a continuous use?
Yeah, oh, yeah, I was.
But did grandpa.
The other alternative is, you know, maybe we could consult with the C M R P C.
Yeah.
If I, if they're the ones who provide the data, then we just.
Alright, so let's, so.
The day that.
Go ahead.
Hold on.
Can I just say something?
Yep.
Um, as the current building inspector's enforcement officer, what Mr. Broder had done was use the resources he had available to him, which was the assessor's cards, which did show it as a business, that's what they pay taxes on, was a business. He let her put a three-family home on that property, which is only allowed in a business, which wouldn't be allowed in general residence or single residence.
Right.
So under, you know, he assumed, and from all the information he had at the time, it was a commercial property to, and, so now if you tell her it's not commercial, what are we gonna do? Make it change house back to two-family?
All right, let's...
I'm just throwing the...
No, I understand what you're saying, and that's...
How you came up with that?
And that, that's greatly appreciated.
Grandfathering might be...
Okay.
And that information, if I was asked at the time, I would've said it was a business as well.
Okay, all right, let's, let's table this till next month.
Okay, so will I just hear?
Yeah, you, we'll just send you a notice, Toby, we'll send you a notice to come in on March fifteenth, and we'll try to get all of this worked out, okay? Thank you, Mark. Thank you, building inspector. Okay, we now have a public hearing, and the first one is the...
Flywheel. Municipal lighting.
Hey, here, it's a...
Okay.
That's the flywheel.
Go ahead.
Okay. The zoning board of appeals will hold their public hearing at West Boylston Town Office, one forty Worcester Street, West Boylston, Mass., on Thursday, February fifteenth, two thousand eighteen, at seven thirty P M. To act on a petition of West Boylston Municipal Light Plant for Crescent Street, West Boylston, Mass., for a special permit for the installation of a hundred and twenty-five kilowatt flywheel energy storage system at two twenty-five Suesbury Street, West Boylston, Mass. Record title stands in the name of Town of West Boylston, one forty Worcester Street, West Boylston, Mass. Copies of the petitions are on file in the office of the Town Clerk, one forty Worcester Street. All interested parties are invited to attend the hearing. David Fumia, Chair.
Okay, oh, all right, yeah. Okay, so this is how we're gonna do this, okay? The petitioner will have the first round, and once the petitioner delivers his spiel, then we'll open it up to questions from the board. After that, we'll open it up to the public, okay? So, introduce yourself and your address, and Toby can write it down.
Yep.
And then give us your spiel.
Sure. Uh, thank you for having me tonight for this petition for a, a special permit for use of, um, a municipal energy, or flywheel energy storage system at the intersection of Suesbury Street and Paul Tiven. The light department currently has a three hundred and seventy kilowatt solar system, you know, that's the sizing in, in kilowatts. And what we're proposing to do on the, in front of the last row, is place some storage devices that are actually flywheels, that'll take the solar energy that's there, um, and store it to a later time in the day, typically, uh, early evening, and, and spin these flywheels off and use the energy when we need it. We need it between six and ten P M. Part of this project is a grant that we received from the state of Massachusetts, which is covering fifty percent of the cost, which is about five hundred thousand dollars total. So, I have received about a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant from the state. The manufacturer of the materials is giving another hundred and twenty-four thousand, and then the light department's gonna spend a hundred and twenty-four of its own money on the remainder of the project cost. So, it's a pretty good demonstration project of, of storage technology. The, the key to making renewables work is, is being able to store it and use it when you really need it. Uh, and so that's what we're hoping to do here. Um, the, it is industrial zoned, uh, we have the space for it, we have the setbacks for it. It's pretty benign, the capsules, there's sixteen capsules that get buried in the ground. Some of the biggest concerns that we heard about, and we wanted to make sure that we alleviate any concerns, is that they might produce noise. The manufacturer has given us a video clip that shows that they don't make noise. Uh, they're very well-balanced. They're actually magnetically, uh, held in place, so that they are extremely efficient and frictionless, so that they spin for very long times. And that's the kind of the key feature of this particular storage technology, that it can spin for four hours. Because I need to predict, uh, our peak loads on a daily basis, and I can get it accurate within about four hours a day. So, that's the kind of the innovative feature of this, um, demonstration, uh, project. And so that's what we intend to do, what we hope to do. Our, our neighbors are mostly industrial customers, except for, um, Angel Brook, which is across the street from us. And so, I reached out to the board of trustees there, and they didn't, um, they didn't have too many concerns. I met with one gentleman from that board, and I walked him through the project, and he was, they were pretty impressed. Since the notices went out, I received one call from a resident, who was an engineer, who wanted to learn more about what we're putting in on a technology basis, but no concerns with the, um, the sighting of it. So, that's where we're at today. If everything goes well, we'd like to install this in the fall and have it operational by the winter, so by December.
Anything else?
No, that's it.
Any questions from the boards, from the board, Charlie? Andrew?
No question, uh, sounds like a fantastic plan.
Raj?
I do. I, I know that, you know, it doesn't make a noise. So, is, is there will be a humming noise? What kind of noise it'll, um, constant, like, uh, the wheel rotating noise?
No noise from the devices themselves.
So, it's all buried under the ground?
It's all buried in the ground.
No noise will be?
We, we do have availability to show it, the...
Uh, we don't have it set up.
We don't have it set up.
I have, I have it on a laptop if somebody wants to see it, but...
We, um, we have a link to a, a video clip on, on our webpage as well, but...
I have, I have seen it, this is by the public.
What, what happens is, the flywheels themselves make no noise, and even my controls make no noise. But the video clip does show a control room that has, uh, the buzzing of the, the fans, and there are computer laptops that make more noise than, uh, than anything. But as the gentleman that's giving us a tour through the video clip of the flywheels, and he's standing over the flywheels, there's zero noise coming from these. These are, these are, if there's a noise from a, a flywheel, that generally means that they're unbalanced, and they're not working properly, because that's, a flywheel is designed to be almost frictionless, as best as possible with the engineering available today. So, I'm taking the word of the manufacturer that there's zero noise. I have all the spec sheets, it doesn't, it doesn't list any noise output from the devices. And in the video clip, if you do watch it, the noise is from a laptop and a fan inside a, a conics that they use as a monitoring station, uh, to videotape the, um, the flywheels in, in the ground. So, I think that's, hopefully that answers your question.
I do, I do have another question, is, uh, how much energy will be stored in a given time?
It's, um, this particular, uh, setup is a hundred and twenty-eight kilowatts, so it's about half the size of our existing solar system that's next to it.
So, do we get any less electric bill?
The, um, no, the bills won't go down, but they won't go up either, because it's a relatively small investment on our part, a hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars. But it will, in the long run, help us determine if this is a technology that we wanna scale up in size somewhere else, that makes, that might be more appropriate. And if we could scale it to a utility scales, uh, size, like, like we, uh, for the solar system over at the, um, the Cap landfill, which is, um, much bigger than this one, that might be a great application there, uh, and a great use of the land around that, because it's not utility scale yet. This is relatively small in nature, as, as far as the utility stores go.
When you store that energy, how long it will be there?
When you store the energy, it's available in four-hour increments, so...
Hold on.
What we try to do is, we wanna know, we'll charge during the night and during the middle of the day, and then we'll uncharge or discharge it, uh, more likely, uh, six P M to, to nine or ten P M. And that's usually when the peak occurs for this town, this community. In a community like West Boylston, um, our residential load drives our demand. The businesses are mostly closed by, uh, early evening.
I think, and I do understand that there is none like this anywhere close to us, right?
No, this will be the first on the east coast. There's one demonstration site on the west coast in California. There's one going in Hawaii, and then there's one in the Philippines.
And I, I actually have another question. As I understand, this is a technology that's also, uh, potentially useful in case of brownouts, uh, blackouts, that kind of thing, because it's kinetic energy, you're not relying on fuel. Uh, so if we scaled this up, like, this could sort of level out the power system in the town.
It's, we're, um, one of the demonstration products of this particular project is that we're gonna demonstrate that it can, um, stabilize voltage.
Right.
And so, one of the things we're gonna prove...
Sorry, that's a better way to put it.
Yeah. So, we're gonna prove to the state that this technology is viable for, uh, voltage regulation. And, um, there's a market for that, because the, the entire grid needs a, a stable voltage source. So, we're gonna show that, at this smaller scale, that this technology can do that. And so, eventually, when it is scaled up, uh, we, the market, the, the electric grid can take advantage of this technology. So, it has a lot of beneficial uses, but the main thing is taking the renewable energy and shifting it to a time where, uh, the market is more expensive for us. If, if I generate during the day with solar energy, the market, the, the price of energy is relatively low. But, uh, mid-afternoon, early evening, the price skyrockets as, as people come home and turn things on. So, that, this, this has the, the real, real-time benefit of fixing that. And, um, on that, the, the payback is probably about six years, so it's, it's a pretty fast payback for a project. But when the gentleman in the video, if you get a chance to see the video, walks directly over the, the capsule, there is no noise coming from the capsule, so...
You can probably hear more buzzing from the high-tension power wires.
There, there is that, there's a, um, there is the national grid, um, transmission line above our site. There's also a railroad, uh, track between us and our neighbors, and you have the, um, uh, Suesbury Street itself.
Right.
And we've measured the ambient background noise there. It's, it varies from day to day, but it's, it's by no means a quiet neighborhood.
Daniel?
How close, how close, um, is the plan proposing to have this located on the lot to Tiven and Drive? I'm, I'm trying to get a sense of sort of the, the setback.
So, we'll be at the southern edge of the existing solar field. Uh, at the, the southmost row of panels will be parallel to that. And so, if we look at the, the map, you must have, you have the application map, or any of the, um, the... It's one inch equals forty feet, so we're probably, it's like eighty, approximately eighty feet back from the road.
Okay, okay.
So, the setback is fine.
Yeah. Um, and a, as I'm sure you're aware, um, the, the current solar panel, um, array that's there now received a, a, a special permit for that back in two thousand and nine.
Yeah.
That previous permit had a couple of conditions associated with it. If we were to approve this special permit tonight, uh, would you be comfortable with continuing those, those two same conditions? And what they are briefly is, owner shall obtain and comply with all permitting as required by town agencies. And then the second one was, owner shall submit proof that the special permit was filed with Worcester Registry of Deeds. You know, they seem, they seem reasonable. And then the only other one, I think, that's reasonable, or that's, um, you know, a factor here, um, that we're, that we generally look at, um, in our sort of eight-factor analysis here for granting a special permit, is, there's one that talks about no excessive noise or vibration, or that kind of thing shall be observable at the lot lines, and you're saying, you know, that's not gonna be a problem. So, would you be comfortable with that as a further condition of, of this permit?
Yes, I'd be comfortable with that.
How many flywheels are gonna be put into the ground?
Sixteen.
Sixteen. And they'll be spaced?
In about a seventy-five to by a hundred-foot, um, square area.
And right now, California, Hawaii, and the Philippines are the only ones.
Correct.
How is it that we were so fortunate for it to come this way, and specifically to the town of West Boylston?
Well, just to backtrack on the flywheels, there's other flywheels around the world, but they have very, uh, they're, they operate very fastly. They only operate for seconds or minutes at a time. The innovative feature with this one is the four-hour runtime, so this is the, will be one of, what I said, three or four installations in the world, coming here. And what had happened was, the state came out with a grant for energy storage technology. Most of the technology you're seeing applied around us now is lithium, uh, battery. And we wanted, uh, something different, because we felt that this grant is gonna have plenty of applicants, um, submit lithium-ion batteries. But that's a chemical device, um, and so we wanted to stay away from a chemical device and go with something probably like this, more kinetic, more mechanical, mostly metal. It's benign in, in nature. And when we applied for it, we were the only one that applied with the flywheel technology. Most of the applicants, like we anticipated, were battery-based, and so we looked different. We, um, we, we took a different twist on the, uh, the, the application. We had the benefit of, uh, saving money on energy costs and transmission costs, but we also had the voltage regulation plate that we're gonna demonstrate. And so, it made it look more attractive, and we were one of, um, I believe, twenty or so applicants that were awarded the grant out of, I think, eighty or ninety, I believe the number was. So, we're very fortunate.
Okay, and you said that, um, if it's approved, that you would start in the fall?
Yes.
And how long will it take from A to B, A to Z?
Yeah, I don't expect this to take more than, uh, probably two or three months maximum. What I'd like to do is get as much prep work done in, in the fall, in anticipation of a, uh, late-fall delivery, and then install them right away. The, the, the devices themselves are only six feet diameter, six feet deep, so they don't, there's not a lot of work to them. The conduit run, uh, is, is made between the capsules, and the capsules themselves get, uh, connected electrically to an inverter, and then it goes to our existing transformer. So, we're gonna use as much existing infrastructure on that site as possible. All the existing interconnection, the transformer that's, uh, feeding the, um, solar panels, all that will be utilized for this device, so we don't have to have, uh, any, any additional investment or any additional equipment out there.
Well, I'm glad that you reached out to, um, Angel Brook, and that, you know, that they were very comfortable with this. So, obviously, you gave them a good presentation and showed them, you know, exactly what was gonna happen. The other thing, only other thing I say is, you know, congratulations, you know, for getting this. Um, I, I think it's wonderful, you know, that you were able to get it, you know, considering that this is the first one on the east coast, and, you know, you made, you know, I guess, a very good impression on, uh, when you made your presentation for the grant. So, um, I, I think it's, it's amazing, so, congratulations on that, and to your old department for that.
Thank you.
All right, anybody else, anything?
You want to open up by the public?
Okay. I'll open the hearing up to the public. Is there anybody in the public that wants to talk, or have any questions about this? Anybody? Yes? State your name and address, please.
Mark Freeman, Nate Nile Drive. How heavy is each, like, one of the flywheels? I'm just, I'm trying to get an idea for how this stores enough energy to run for four hours at a hundred kilowatts.
It's, um, ten thousand pounds.
Ten thousand, okay.
Each capsule.
Wow.
Yep.
So, that's probably within your, what you could probably take with one of those, that's within your...
Yeah, exactly.
I mean, it, there's a lot of inertia, once they get the metal moving, and, and, and they, that's the reason why you get the four-hour runtime. But in the O N M manual, as we're going through it, we noticed all the safety precautions, because if you discharge it or unconnect it from the electric grid, and it just sits there and spins, it could take weeks to unspin itself.
Right.
Unless you mechanically break it. A brake as in, um, stop, stopping controlled.
That's actually my question, how do you fix it if it breaks? How do you know if it works?
Can you state your name and address, please?
Oh, I'm Sarah Miles, I'm at one of the...
Um, because it's a demonstration site, we're gonna have, uh, sensors, uh, throughout the, each of the sixteen modules. The manufacturer's gonna monitor them, we're gonna monitor them. The, the main thing that they look for is vibration, and, and in the, in vibration monitoring, you can usually pick up defects pretty quickly, so that you can shut it down safely.
Right.
And this is a, a, a very fast, rapid, uh, sampling rate, so that it doesn't become catastrophic.
Okay, one thing that was on the, on the video was about a shed, and Mr. Olson had mentioned that you're not putting up a shed.
No, uh, they're, they use that, it looks like, as a control room, so that you can watch and videotape, um, the operation of these under the, under the ground. We're gonna use all the existing equipment that we have there, so we don't need a shed. We already have a control room, uh, we already have a transformer. In fact, actually, nothing of, uh, not much of the capsules are gonna go through the existing, um, control room.
So, you'll be able to monitor it from, from home?
Far, from, from a distance. It'll all be monitored remotely, and it'll be start and stopped remotely as well. There's no need to go to the site, just like the solar system is basically on, on autopilot.
Okay, does anybody in the public have anything else to say? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close the public hearing?
Okay.
Right.
Okay.
I do have, I do have one other question. No fencing, nothing, right? It's just a open field?
We're gonna extend the existing fence line around this, so if the solar system does have a fence around it, we'll extend it to encapsulate the, this area as well.
Fencing will be good, you know, so...
It's a chain-linked fence, it's, it's adequate. We do have it monitored with cameras and, uh, alarms, so...
Thank you.
Okay, here, you know other further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Before we, the board does anything else, is there anything else that you wanna, you wanna lay on us? Nothing? Okay, so now we'll open it up to discussion amongst the board. Anybody have anything? Toby, you have, um, a vote sheet? Please. Charlie, nothing?
Nothing.
Andrew?
Looks good.
Okay. Raj, nothing?
Nope.
Chris, nothing?
I wanna see it when it's finished.
Yeah, well, that's the other thing, too, is that when it's done, I'd like you to send a, an email to us, and, you know, we'll come out there, you know, whoever wants to come out. I know I'd be interested, and Andrew says he'd like to come. Yes, Mr. Freeman?
Actually, when will it be put in? I'd like to see when before it's in the ground, or like, when you're installing this capsule? When will that be about?
November.
November, okay.
I'll, I'll give, um, I'll have updates on it, I'll put it out to the boards. I'll put it out to the boards.
So, you can do that, you know, just so that everybody can see exactly what it looks like, you know? Just go out there and look at it and stuff. Okay.
So, and I'll make a motion to, uh, grant a special permit, uh, under section six point, I'm sorry, section three point two E two, um, for the...
Installation?
Yes.
For the installation of a solar system?
Public utility facility.
Okay.
One point two five kilowatt flywheel energy storage system.
And with the three previously mentioned conditions. One for comply with all permitting as required by town agencies, one for submit proof the special permit has been filed with Worcester Registry of Deeds, and one for no excessive noise, vibration, glare, dust, smoke, heat, or odor shall be observable at the lot lines.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, here, you know other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Second.
Aye.
Second.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so the vote is five zero zero. So, when it come, when it shows up, send us an email, so that we can make plans to go out and actually see what it looks like before you put it in the ground, and then when it's all done, and it's up and running, if you could email us again, so we can come over and hear. Like I said, uh, I think it's wonderful that you guys were able to get this, you know? It's absolutely fantastic, and hopefully this is gonna be, you know, you said that there's some things that you're gonna maybe, in the future, add on or something, so I guess we'll see you again.
See you, guys, hopefully.
Okay.
You know, in, on the increased revenue, and maybe you could consider, uh, Mr. Electric Bill.
Well, one good thing is that the light department, and, and this has happened even before I got there, is that they haven't had a rate increase since two thousand and nine. So, for an electric utility to keep rates stable since two thousand and nine, it's a, it's a pretty good achievement.
And this will help.
And this will help, correct.
Because you said that, you know, that six to nine, or six to ten in the evening is when the highest amount of, the highest volume of electricity...
We can curb those costs, and those costs seem to be, are, the costs that are the most increasing in our budget. That, that'll help keep our rates, rates as stable and low as they are.
So, if this works, we can put some, something over there to...
If it gets to a scale that's appropriate for the other site.
I actually have a question that's totally unrelated to this. Does the lighting department own the cable plant as well?
No.
Okay. Is, is that all charter?
Charter, yes.
Okay.
Just curious.
You're all set?
Thank you.
And what we'll do is, we'll have, we'll write up, Mr. Olson will write up the, uh, the decision. We'll send it to the town clerk's office. Twenty, fourteen days we have to get it to the town clerk's office, clear the stamping, and then there's twenty-one day period, you know, because you've gone through this before. and then there's twenty-one day period, you know, if you've gone through this before, and as long as nobody appeals it, which, I didn't see anybody here, you know, there's a couple of questions, but I don't see anybody from Angel, from Angel Brook, so, you know, so I don't see any. And once that comes through, Toby, send you, and then just make sure that the conditions that we said are taken care of. Once you get it registered with the Registry of Deeds, if you could just send us something saying that it's been done and when it was done.
Yeah, we'll do the same thing. I have the original special permit, so we'll just follow the same path.
Okay, you're all set?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for your time.
Yep. Okay, next one is...
Eight o'clock, public hearing.
Okay, eight o'clock. Okay, this is the variance for parking in front of the property. Okay, go ahead, Raj. Eddie?
The zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing at West Boylston Town Office, one forty Worcester Street, West Boylston, Mass., on Thursday, February fifteenth, two thousand eighteen, at eight P.M. to act on a petition of the Girl Scouts of Central and Western Massachusetts, Inc., for a variance for the safe, convenient parking for forty-one vehicles at the front of proposed seven thousand four hundred square foot mixed-use building in accordance with the section five point, two points C of the zoning bylaw, at L.C. Lot sixty Century Drive, S.S.R. Map, one eighty-three, block two, on the north and west side of the Century Drive, West Boylston, Mass. The car title stands on the name of Saint P.S. Associates Partnership, uh, two, L.L.T.D., three one seven East Mountain Street, Worcester, zero one six zero five. Copies of the petitions are on file in the office of the town clerk, one forty Worcester Street. All interested parties are invited to attend the public hearing. David Femia, Chair.
Okay, same thing applies, we'll, the petitioner will present their facts, then we'll, the board will, who has any questions, will ask questions, after that, we'll open it up to the public. Okay? So, state your name and then address for the, for the board, or for the secretary, so she can take your name and information. You all?
I guess I'll start.
Okay.
My name is Suzanne Smiley. I'm the chief operating officer of the Girl Scouts of Central and Western Massachusetts. We are, currently, we have one of our leadership centers, which provides office space and programming for girls in Worcester on Gold Star Boulevard. It's a great business location, but it's not a great business location for us. So, for nine years, we looked for an alternate location, and we found this location in West Boylston and partially in Worcester, which seems perfect for us. So, for over a year, we have been looking at this funny little piece of land, actually, trying to fit in a building that will meet our needs. And the needs, well, our needs include the needs of the girls for sure. So, it's an interesting lot, because it's bounded on two sides by Century Drive, which makes it somewhat triangular. It's got a retention basin on the north side of the lot, which restricts it. So, it's, it's this triangular lot, and as we surveyed it, we discovered that it had a little bit of a difference, we had thought, it's a different thing to get the surveying instruments out there. So, it's caused us a number of times to go back and rethink and redraw and see what we could do. So, we're very excited to come to West Boylston and hoping that we can make this work. I guess I would say the parking, you've, well, I should say all this, I guess, but... Yeah, sure. I would just say that the parking, it's, it's important for us to have it around the building, mostly because of who we serve. We serve girls ages five to eighteen, seventeen, if you want to, the age of becoming an adult, and women. So, it's important for us not to have people wandering over lit paths along a distance, that they could be up near the building, and also having the driveway around the building so that we could move the emergency equipment fully around the building. So, Anthony DiMauro.
Thank you. Anthony DiMauro with Boulder Engineering, representing the Girl Scouts in this plan. Over here, just to give you an idea, I believe I'll show you the area overlaying the site. Is that the corner, or well, at Century Drive, and I believe, is that the Red Cross, FedEx? FedEx Plaza?
Red Cross.
The city line here, to the west is Worcester right here, and then to the east is West Boylston. This lot currently exists as block, map one eighty-three, block two A, and we're proposing to subdivide this into a two-acre parcel for the Girl Scouts facilities. It's a partial warehouse and office-based building, so approximately seven thousand four hundred square feet.
It's only a warehouse right now during cookie time. We have a large storage room where we have many, many cases of cookies that come in and out.
So, the site is currently wooded right now, there's an existing stormwater detention pond that services the, the industrial park right now to the north, and there's a bit of a challenge of the site, is that there's a significant drop from the east side of Century Drive down to this, to the south side, and I believe it's about twenty-plus feet. So, what we propose here is to have an access driveway off of Century Drive through this existing median break, and cars and trucks would circulate around here with parking in the front, and we're proposing fifteen, eighteen spaces along the front within the fifty-foot setback here. And this, although it is only required in this district, fifteen parking spaces, the Girl Scouts, in order to operate and then to have the administrative offices and the volunteers that, that help out with the cookie drive, they would need at least forty-one spaces. So, for truck deliveries, it wouldn't be a tractor-trailer, it would be like a large-box truck, and what we propose is access in here, this is a significant slope, it's about eight percent, and it kind of levels off around the building. It would be a counterclockwise direction, and there would be the loading here on the northeast corner, they would unload the cookies, and then they would continue along the back and back out towards Century Drive. In order to mitigate the stormwater, the increase in imperviousness, we propose to have some kind of surface detention here on the Worcester lot, and I have spoken to the city engineer and the town planner in Worcester, and they don't have any issue with this, and it would require a local stormwater permit, but not, no site plan approval from the city of Worcester, and we propose this to surface detention with a overflow structure that would connect to an existing stormline here on Century Drive, and then it would connect into the Worcester stormwater system. Both sewer and drainage located on Century Drive in front of the proposed building connect to infrastructure that is managed by the city of Worcester, so that would not be an issue. I understand that there's an MS four, but connections to West Boylston stormwater is prohibited, so that would not be an issue to this location. And again, given the steep slope across the site, we're proposing to have a small retaining wall here along the front to support the parking. This would be less than four feet, it wouldn't be considered a structure. We've talked to the building inspector, Eric Bentley, and he, I believe he agreed that this would be just a simple, like, brusel lock block wall, foundationless system. We would be required to have a taller retaining wall here along the east and along the north, and those would be, we would need relief for those walls, and as part of this petition here includes the construction of these walls and the parking along the front of the building. Sewer, and again, like I said, sewer and drainage, stormwater would all connect down here along Century Drive. So, if you had any other questions regarding the operation of the facility, you have anything to answer? Anything else?
My name is Lawrence Tuttle with Architectural Insights, the designers for the Girl Scouts, and what we had, and I think Suzanne pointed it out earlier, the constraints of the configuration of the lot, we did adhere to all of the zoning setbacks for the building and tried to get the most efficient shape for their, their usage, both of office and programs. The other item is that although a very concentrated time of truck traffic, it is only during the cookie period, and that we were constrained somewhat by the circulation requirements for that delivery to be not as disruptive to the general usage of the building, but we had that drive circle the building as a result.
Anything else? Okay, anybody from the board?
Just, just a point.
Is there anything on that lot now? Have you built anything yet? Nothing?
Anything else, Charlie? Any other questions? Any other questions?
Yeah, well, the question is, that Century Drive, I don't see anything wrong with parking in front of that building, because they've got parking all over the place around the buildings that are over there.
Straight across is all parking.
Yeah, it's, it doesn't make much sense.
I'm good. Raj? Well, actually, just a point, so it seems like there's two variances that are being requested, right? One with respect to the setback for the front parking lot, which is, I understand it, there's, I guess, the, the front setback in the industrial zone, as I understand it, is fifty feet. You're asking for a variance from that requirement, is that correct?
Not for the building structure itself, but only for the parking.
For the parking, correct. And then there's a second variance application for either one or both of the walls that you're proposing, just one in the rear.
This is a unique, unique situation, and we've asked Bentley for interpretation, because technically, this could be considered as a side setback, or it's a corner lot, but it's the same street, so we've treated this as a fifty-foot setback existent on the east side of Century Drive here and along the south, and there's a ten-foot setback in the back, but in order to construct this wall here, we would need, we would need relief, and in order to construct this retaining wall on here, if this were to be considered a fifty-foot setback, we would need, ask for relief.
That one there, I mean, if we were, but it's more than ten feet, I guess, is what I'm asking, on the easterly side, the setback?
It's drawn in at fifty.
At fifty.
Okay, okay. I don't know, just a point of order, since this was, you know, formally publicized and given notice as sort of two different...
Two, two different publications.
Can, can we, can we just have the clerk read the second one?
The second one, it's fifteen.
Just so that it's on the record that we're formally opening both of these?
Okay.
Do you have the other one?
Yeah, I do, it's fifteen. The zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing at West Boylston Town Offices, one forty Worcester Street, West Boylston, Mass., on Thursday, February fifteenth, two thousand eighteen, at eight fifteen P.M. to act on a petition of the Girl Scouts of Central and Western Massachusetts, Inc., for a variance for the construction of a retaining wall at the rear of the property in accordance with the section four point two of the zoning bylaw, dimensional requirement for industrial-zoned property, at L.C. Lot sixty Century Drive, S.S.R. Map, one eighty-three, block two, on the north and west side of Century Drive, West Boylston, Mass. The car title stands in the name of Saint P.S. Associates, three one seven East Mountain Street, Worcester, Mass., zero one six zero five. Copies of the petitions are on file in the office of the town clerk, one forty Worcester Street. All interested parties are invited to attend the hearing. David Femia, Chair.
Thank you. Can I...
Great.
Great. Did you mention that, so right now, all of this, including the strip of land that goes into Worcester, right now, that's currently all one lot? Is that...
This, this is all one lot, and includes the part, the piece that includes the detention pond. This would be the proposed lot line here, which would break into a two-acre lot.
Okay.
But you are still working with the planning board, right?
Yes, we, we formally met with the planning board, and they were generally in favor of the project, they, they pointed out that we would need some relief from the zoning board of appeals before we perceive an application with them.
Yep.
Any other questions?
Let me see here. If anybody else has questions, go ahead, I'm still mulling over...
Okay, you got, you do not own the property right now, right? Is that correct?
No.
Okay. Mister?
That Saint Pierre's is the owner of the property.
Okay. So, this property, this property is nine acres, correct? And you're only, you're only gonna sell two acres? Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Now, where the anticipated property line is in the back of the property, what is behind there? Is there any wetlands? Is it significant drop-off? Is it flatland or what?
It's that detention basin, which is what compresses us.
There's a, there's a dry basin. Located right along in this area.
Okay, so that would basically border the property line that you're, that you're looking at?
It would, yes.
Okay.
If I could add, the basin is part of the drainage system for the development, and it was built on, on top of natural topography, so that the shared face of that property line is actually an elevated berm, and so, we're working at the toe of that berm and steepening that slope and, and having to retain it.
How far from the property line is that, is that catch basin? The proposed property line, how far is the basin from there?
Oh, this basin is, is pretty close. I would say maybe about ten feet.
Ten feet, okay.
So, the top of the berm, I think this, I believe this fence line here is part of the top of the berm here, so that's probably less than, so I need to be more accurate. Probably a little, yeah, by, by a ten feet.
Okay, and so, the, the setback in the back is only about five feet from the property line, where the wall is gonna be, I take it? Is that's, that's the relief you're looking for?
Correct, for the wall.
Okay, and it needs, then the setback needs to be ten feet?
Correct.
According to the bylaws?
Correct.
So, there's forty-one parking spots, right? Total? Okay. How much of that property is actually in West Boylston? Because I see the property line, the Worcester, West Boylston line is like, right on the, the road that's on the left-hand side. So, basically, all the green that's on, is it, the, this part here is all Worcester, but that's still all gonna be part of the property?
Yes, it is, and I'd say it looks approximately about half an acre on each land, and this would be, we'll have a closed drainage system located here, and the slope, this site gently slopes down towards Mountain Street, so it just naturally lends itself to have a stormwater management, most likely surface detention in this area, will be remaining here, and the actual access to the site will be on the Worcester side.
Okay, I have, I have a couple of issues here. One is, is the parking lot in the front? Because the bylaw specifically says that there's not, there should be no parking in the front of the building, it should be on the side or in the back, okay? Obviously, you don't have the land on the, on the side or in the back, okay? The other thing, too, is it's more than fifteen parking spots, which means that you're gonna have to go to the planning board to get an approval from them, do a site plan review, and approval is needed for more than fifteen parking spots. Also, two is, you're gonna have to go to the planning board to get an A and R to just...
The honorable...
To the planning board for that. To the planning board for that. You know, one of the things that I've learned since I've been on this board is that variances are the toughest thing for the board to approve because there's certain guidelines that are followed and there's three criteria for it, okay? And basically, I was all, I was under the impression when I first time came on the board that, you know, as long as the applicant met one or two or three, as long as they met at least one of them, that the board had the option, you know, to approve the, the variance. Unfortunately, through the years and through going through different trainings and stuff, it's been told that unless the petitioner proves beyond reasonable doubt that there's a need and that these three factors are met, that the board does not have to approve the variance. Right now, and this is just me speaking, right now, I don't see those three conditions being met. So unless anybody else on the board...
Can I speak to them specifically?
Hold on, hold on. Unless anybody on the board has any other, you know, I mean, I'm looking at, you know, the chapter, you know, that talks about variances, you know, and it says the board of appeals may grant upon appeal or petition with respect to the particular land or structure of variance expressly included a variance for the use from the provisions of the bylaw where said board specifically finds that owning, that owning to the circumstances related to the soil conditions, shape or topography of such land or structures and especially affecting such land or structures but not affecting the general zoning district in which it is located, a literal enforcement of the provisions of this bylaw would involve substantial hardship, financial or otherwise, to the petitioner or appellant and that desired relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and without nullifying the substantially derogating from the intent or purpose of the zoning bylaw, okay? Now, like I said, you know, that's just, you'll have your, your chance again, that, that's just my assessment of it. I, I haven't heard anything that has basically addressed these three issues. Now, the board has, you know, can talk about this and, you know, if, if somebody can explain to me that, you know, that they have met the three conditions, then I, I'll listen to it, but I, I don't see that any of the three conditions being met. I mean, I understand, you know, because of the size of the property and stuff, you know, the parking lot, but, you know, basically, the bylaw says that the parking cannot be in the front of the building, it needs to be on the side or the back. So if anybody on the board has anything to, to help me, you know, understand this much better, that would be greatly appreciated.
You wanna respond?
Yeah.
I have, what is? I have only a weird question. When you have a triangular lot like this and it's bounded on two sides by a street, where's the side and where's the back?
It all depends on, I would, I would assume that it depends on whether, whether the main entrance is.
Okay.
The main, if the main entrance is on the side, then that would be considered the front. If the main entrance is in the, in the, on the front of the building, then that would be the front. Okay, I mean, that's just my interpretation, I, I could be wrong. Building inspector is, can you add some relief to, come on up, add some relief to this?
Our zoning bylaw says corner lots, which is not a corner lot, if it was a corner lot, it would require a front yard setback on both, both, from both streets. However, the way, this unique situation where the road takes a bend, it's not really, it's not a corner lot between two, the intersection of two streets, it's just a bend in the road. So the way I was looking at, at this one was, I was pretty much looking at the front, at the building as where the front entrance is and where the, the majority of the frontage of the yard is, is here. This is a minor, so I was considering this, this the front and this the side.
Okay. So back to that, you know, recitation of the standard that we're supposed to be applying, you know, in this case where a variance is being requested. It specifically speaks to, you either need something distinct or something particular about the soil conditions or the shape or topography of the land. So can you speak a, a little bit about that and, and what your, what your position is as to, as to that, you know, part of the standard that, that we're supposed to be applying?
I think it's the shape and the topography, both. Because of that, it limits where the building can actually be placed. And it, and it's bounded, you know, we can't, we can't move. It's not something that applies to the rest of the district, it applies to this lot. It's not the same for the Red Cross, it's not the same across the street or for FedEx. It's this lot because of the, the stormwater management system that we're, you know, bounded by that on one side and this street coming the other side. To me, that's both the shape and the topography limits how you can actually, I mean, I defer to these guys, but it limits where you can actually place that building. We've been through several iterations and it seems to keep coming down to it has to be here and the parking has to be there because of both the shape and topography and I would argue that that's not something that other parcels in that development are dealing with, that it is unique to this parcel and it is a hardship for us to try to, to put a building on this property without having the variance to allow, especially the parking in front of the building.
This park, the green park that's in Worcester, what is that gonna be used for? Anything?
Stormwater management.
You can't put parking in there.
Well, I think we had considered overflow parking there, but it was just that the topography of the site does not lend itself because it would be a very steep slope to ask someone to park over here and then the slope up here would be twelve percent to get someone here to up there. So there was more consideration of safety issues in the winter, icing, winter conditions and, you know, lighting at night.
And this is a building where it really is a program facility for young girls and mothers.
Oh, I have, I have no objections to that.
So the safety, I think...
I have nothing against that, I buy Girl Scout cookies, so I have nothing against this. It's just that, you know, you're asking for variance and, like I said, it's one of the toughest things that, that this board can rule on and it's supposed to be that way and there's a certain criteria and the criteria is, there's three things that need to be, you know, that have to be met and unless all three of them are met, then the board really shouldn't be approving a variance. And like I said, I have not been convinced that these three criterias have been, have been proven. So, you know, that's just for me, that's me personally, I, you know, I'm leaving it up to the rest of the board.
May I?
Yeah, go ahead.
If I might also add, we were very cognizant of the state requirements for handicapped access, which the Girl Scouts would certainly want to have into their facility and that would force us to have at a minimum handicapped spaces in proximity to the entrance. The, the building is positioned in, you know, providing the required setback for that fifty foot. We're, we're not able to otherwise place a handicapped space near the entrance of the building without it occurring in the setback.
So for the three criteria, we've got the topography, we've got the hardship and then we've got that draining the variance can't nullify or substantially derogate from the intent or purpose of the zoning bylaw.
And when...
Sorry, go ahead.
When I looked at the intent and purpose of the zoning bylaw, it says it's to promote the health, safety, convenience and welfare of the people of Boylston essentially. So parking near the building lets the employees, the volunteers, the girls participating in the programs to park in the lit area close to the building, prevents the longer walks, especially at night and in dangerous winter conditions. It eliminates the isolated, remote parking area, which is a, a safety concern and all of those things, I think, comply, they're, they don't derogate, they reinforce the intent to the bylaw, which is to promote health, safety, convenience and welfare.
What's your thought on that?
Mr. Dave, I took a ride around there and all the buildings, they park in front or on the side, I don't know how they do it, but it doesn't make that much difference. It's a separate, it's a separate entity than that whole complex. East Mountain Street could be the front of your building, that, just change the name of the, where's the front, have a little sign over here in this parking lot, go in through the side entrance and you cover yourself, you don't need to worry about it. Just, the building setup, that ain't gonna work?
Early on, we thought that the entry drive, because the Girl Scouts, and no offense to West Boylston, wanted a Worcester address for marketing purposes.
Fundraising.
And fundraising. So the entry was purposely put at the, the town line and the approach to the building would be from that direction that you described. We did present that as a scenario, as a building front, much like the abutting parcel right across Century Drive. The front of their building is not parallel to Century Drive, it faces into the property. And so we were using that as a, a weak argument, I would grant, but it was the first approach, but much like the board has pointed out, much as everyone commonly refers to, where the entry is, is the front of the building. There is, in fact, an exit on that very face of the building, it's a required egress. I doubt if they would want it.
Call that the front.
It would be semantics at that point.
This is not gonna cause the public any pro, any problem at all if you leave the parking lot the way it is. That's laid out very nicely.
I, I actually agree.
Anybody else?
So you, you also mentioned that currently, this is a nine-acre lot and your, your, your plan is to chop off these, these two acres here and, and go, go ahead with your project. I'm sure you've obviously, I'm sure you've thought about this, but for the, the board's purposes and at least as we sit here today, the full lot right now is nine acres. So what about those other seven acres that, that doesn't, you know, make this feasible to use that other?
It's on in West Boylston. Is that right? All the other nine, the seven acres in West Boylston?
It's all in West Boylston.
So you don't want to use West Boylston name, you rather use Worcester name?
Well, we could.
That, that's what I'm understanding?
No, they, the Girl Scouts did not want to basically have the detention basin because it was not a useful entity for them as an asset for their building lot. The owners of the development was kind enough to consider breaking that away.
Okay, anything else from the board?
For us to maintain the...
Hold on, hold on, is there anything else from the board? Okay, I'm gonna open it up.
So my understanding is, you know, if, you, you can open up the, uh, road on the, this side of the...
No.
That's correct, because of topography, the elevation. We, that was a scenario that we had tried to do.
I thought you said that you wanted to use the Worcester name for marketing.
But that really doesn't...
We looked at putting a driveway coming across here, but the top, it was just too steep, it wasn't safe, didn't beat typical engineering standards with regards to slope rate coming up, eighteen percent slope coming across here, so, you know, we gotta come at a lower elevation and hence we have this wall over here to try to keep the site a little lower. The, the remaining parcel is currently used as a stormwater management facility for the developments and it's basically undevelopable.
So the majority of that seven acres is, is for drainage?
Yeah, I think the, the comment about the Worcester address is just which side of the building to put the door on, not where to put the driveway.
Right, because originally, we were hoping to put the driveway going through, kind of circular, you know? So you'd come in one way or the other and, on Century Drive and, but because of the topography, we weren't able to do that. I mean, the Red Cross has a Worcester address. They're entirely in West Boylston. They have their mailbox on...
From the street to the front of the building, how, how much, how much is there? What, how many feet?
I'm sorry, from here to here?
Yeah, from where the parking lot is, where you have proposed parking lot, from there to the front of the building.
And they, they break there?
Yep.
Well, this, this is, this is twenty-four, this is eighteen, twenty... Sixty feet, is that where it's here?
Sixty feet?
From, from here to here.
Is anything, any others from the board having...
I think I have, just, just one more. So the, the second, so this, this three-part test that we've been talking about, the second point of that three-part test is sort of what is peculiar about this particular piece of land when you look at the surrounding district? Is there something specific about this piece of land that says it's harder for you to comply with zoning than it is for the surrounding lots? I mean, I, obviously, I'm, so I'm just looking, if, if you go up sort of the, the loop, I mean, you, you're not gonna find, you know, any of the other lots around there that are gonna have the, the turn in the road. So I, I can understand there in a sense that this is maybe a little bit different situation, but are there any other differences that, that have occurred to you that...
On the Worcester side, this is, is basically too, too narrow in order to be, to develop, developable, um, the structures and kind of only leaves this southeast corner of the lot where we can place a, a structure that would be useful to, to the Girl Scouts.
And I would wanna add also that the, the second part of, of the request with the wall that is at the toe of that berm for the retention basin is an interpretation, again, of the bylaw in that, I believe the bylaw was presented so that a property owner would not constrain the future use of the abutters parcel. That there would not be a structure built in proximity to the property line that would then encumber the abutter. The abutter in this case is a never change, never change the development's drainage system, a detention basin that is a dry basin built on top of the topography that existed out there so that it's, if there was a compromise to this parcel by that berm, we're trying to maintain that and not alter that drainage system for the development. So we find that as a constraint.
That is unique to that parcel because that detention basin is serving the entire development, but it happens to be next to this parcel. It's not likely we can pick that building up and, I mean, we've looked at it for over a year and place it a different way because of the shape, the topography, the detention basin. It just, it's too constrained to be able to, to shift it, to move it, to turn it. We did turn it.
Multiple times.
Multiple times.
Is that a reason you can move the building close to the road, right? Put the parking on the back?
Well, because the setback, there's a fifty-foot setback, so we could probably only move it about another ten...
Eight feet?
Yeah.
Eight to ten feet maximum. So you wouldn't pick up even a, a depth of parking space on the backside?
Okay, is there any other questions from the, the board?
Not at this time.
Okay, I'm gonna open it up to the public. Does anybody in the public have anything to say? Any comments? Yes, sir?
And Mark, for you, in Howard Drive, this seems like exactly one of the areas this is often for. This seems like it's a little sliver of a piece of property, it's, it's hard to fit the, the building on it, the building is, relative to the other properties, it's way smaller. The, the reason they're not using that other seven acres is because it's all wet and it's not useful. This seems like exactly what the, the variance process, maybe, maybe we went on saying the right things or whatever they are. are kind of not saying the right thing, but it seems like the, the slope or the grade isn't allowing them to put the property, to put the building in the way they want because it's too steep for the tiny piece of property, which I guess isn't anybody's fault except whatever the glacier that put it there. Um, and, and that's the reason for the wall because it's too steep on one side. And then it's just too skinny to fit the building and the parking in the, in the space allowed. I mean, I suppose you could, whatever, consider a whole new different, whole new property, but whoever's gonna come onto this piece of property's gonna have the same problem. It's still skinny. You know, I mean, it seems like this is what variances are about. When you're on a piece of property that doesn't sort of conform to, uh, the sort of generalization that was thought of when zoning was put in place. Zoning is a sort of a broad brush and then you have this little specific, you know, micro thing as opposed to the macro zoning. You have this little micro problem and this seems like why, I mean, and this is, this is exactly the, the way the government, the, the process should work. You know, as you're coming here and the CVA should look into critically. Um, but, but this is, uh, it's not like, oh, I'm gonna get censured again. Um, it's not like one of those marijuana, um, places that is sort of controversial in the first place. This is the Girl Scouts. This is a, a good thing for the towns, a good thing for whatever, anybody. I have two daughters. I've been to their other facility and, I mean, I've, I've, I've done, participated in the programs as much as my daughters want to participate. I've eaten the cookies as much as I want, you know?
That's what I'm wondering, you know? You might add a free cookie.
Right, well, I don't want free cookies. I've done my, my training on the-
No wonder.
But this seems like exactly what the process is about. And as a citizen, participating in the Girl Scouts, in this, in, I, I'm also on the planning board as a disclosure, but as a citizen in town with kids and living around here, I think that it's not a bad thing for the town to have the, um, Girl Scouts facility in town. And the fact that this piece of property is sort of screwy is exactly what the process should solve for them.
So the, the question is, is this the only two-acre lot buildable or out of the nine acres?
I was just looking, if you're asking me the question, I was just looking on the map, but it looks like the rest of it is all wet. There's, there's a detention basin, there's some wetlands, there's a little, whatever. There's not a real nice spot-
There's a pond in the back corner.
So nothing is buildable lot? So when you made the A and R for this two acre and then seven acres, in the future, are you going to use that seven-acre lot for any other building?
No, no plans for it now.
But is it-
Hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on, Mr. Dave. Do you state your name and address for the record, please?
Nanette St. Pierre, St. Pierre Associates Studio.
Thank you.
So those are not buildable lots?
It's, no, it's a-
All are wetland?
There's an inter, there's an intermittent stream through it, but the Girl Scouts wouldn't be coming to us without the ability to have Worcester address. So that ties into this because they will have a Worcester address. So, they wouldn't be looking at-
What I'm understanding is, you know, so you will go for a A and R to split this property, an acre lot, to two acre and the rest of them are for seven acres. That seven-acre lot, in the future, it may be buildable lots. Is that right?
No, no. It's, when we matched your plan this years ago, everything was looked at and was gone over with a fine toothed comb. There's an intermittent stream. Believe me, if it was buildable, we would've used it because, you know, it's a business park. So that's been from day one, open space.
That sound like it stays open space?
Yes.
So out of the whole, out of the total nine acres, only two of it is buildable? The other seven is not buildable?
Correct.
Anybody else?
I think, you know-
Hold on, hold on, hold on.
Anybody else? Do you folks have anything else to say? No? Okay. I'll take, take your motion to close the public area.
Motion to close the public area?
Right, of the seven.
Seven.
Having no other discussion, complaints, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, the board will now discuss-
I think, you know, Lance or Dave, so I think, you know, the parking at the front. So, looking at the FedEx, they are parking at the front.
Right.
You're right. The thing is, is that when FedEx was built, this bylaw was probably not in existence.
I don't think so, that long ago.
How long, how, how old is, how long has FedEx been there?
About two, two thousand and four, yeah.
Yeah, I don't think so. But FedEx, they're in Worcester, they're in Worcester?
No, everything's in West Boylston except the front of this parcel we're talking about and on the big office building. The parking lot for the big office building is in West Boylston. That's at the entrance to Century. Everything is, is West Boylston.
So have you, have you applied for a special variance for that FedEx parking? This is very entirely different questions.
I believe there was a variance taken for FedEx, but I'm not exactly sure it was for the parking. But I think it was-
I know, I know that FedEx personally say, I do go out and, but they do park at the front.
That's the exit, Red Cross.
Okay, I'm looking at the other properties in that area.
Red Cross.
Yeah, and there's parking, there's parking lot over there.
It's like you said, there's parking lot over there.
I don't, I don't think it's gonna make any visible difference for them to put a parking in, in front or behind or whatever. And I think that's, that one of the criteria is, you know, is there gonna be substantial harm to the surrounding community. I think that it's gonna look like all the other buildings out there.
Where is the bylaw in the book? I can't find it.
Who, uh, which one?
For the, uh, it states about the parking, no parking in the front of the building.
So that is right here, five point two B two C.
B two?
Yeah.
This is- Yeah.
B two C.
But not within the required-
Wait a minute.
Right here.
Where are you? That, no, that's, uh, loading spaces. Two C, right here. In business and industrial districts, all parking spaces shall be provided only at the side or to the rear of buildings, but not within the required setback.
Where is this?
But how does, so in business districts, all parking needs to be at the side or the rear of the building? How are existing businesses complying with that?
They don't. They were built beforehand.
Okay.
I think, one of the things the town, I believe, is trying to do is to try and avoid that moving forward.
Huh, all right.
Can I comment to the parking in the front of the building?
Yep.
Um, I think that that's driven by what the, well, maybe, I don't know, it's not driven now, but maybe when it was implemented, it was to promote a more pedestrian-friendly sort of development so that you, you, you weren't sort of trying to walk through parking lots from business to business to business. And I think that's sort of not applicable here because there's nothing nearby.
Yeah.
You know, it's, it's not like you're trying to get from there, I don't know, maybe you're trying to get to Red Cross, but it doesn't seem appropriate in this, as far as that motivation to have a parking in the front of the building.
Yeah.
In fact, here, where there's nothing nearby, parking in front of the building is almost beneficial because then you can, you can, you can drive in, you don't have to walk wherever you're walking from, which is very far away.
So, I mean, I, I, I look at, I mean, I'm struggling with this one personally because I see sort of two different things right now. One, one, one side of my brain is saying, maybe the building is just a little bit too big. And if the building were a little bit smaller, we could sort of squeeze things in and, and make it closer to conformity. That's one side. The other side that I'm thinking is, is honestly along the lines of, of what's been talked about, which is, this does seem like it, it has, you know, an irregular shape. It does seem like it has some difficult topography challenges associated with it. Which is, you know, you know, those are the, the particular things that, that we're looking at, that we're supposed to be looking at under the variance standard. Second of all, it does seem like that the surrounding lots in this area are not quite the same. This is, this one sort of does stick out a little bit. Um, that's, that's where I am, board members.
Yeah, it'd be, it'd be one thing if they were trying to cram this into the triangle in front of the Beaman. You know, then obviously, we could say that's gonna cause some hardship for the surrounding territory and it's at odds with everything else in the area. But to put this over by FedEx and Amuse and, and the American Red Cross, I, I don't know. It seems in keeping with the neighborhood.
Okay, so we've talked about the parking. Now, there's another issue. The issue is the, in the back, the setback, okay? Is there any possibility, and I'm just asking a question, is there any possibility that the property line in the back can move, be moved back six feet? Because if you do that, then you'll have the ten-foot setback in the back and you wouldn't have to worry about us trying to issue a variance because you'd be within the limits. I'm just asking a question. I mean, that would, that would basic, because that's why I asked you, how far is the proposed property line in the, in the rear to where that retention pond is? And you said it's about ten feet. So if you take six feet, you're still gonna be in front of the, the pond, but you're gonna have your ten feet of, actually you'll have five, six, you'll have over, almost eleven, over eleven feet.
The, the only issue there, the physical issue there is that that would put the property line basically in the berm of the detention basin, that, that growth in that lot. Uh, we actually did, uh, ask the owners to adjust the property line, which they did, to allow the vehicle circulation around the building. So it has been moved, actually, in the A and R plan would show that. The, I don't, I can't speak for the Girl Scouts, but that would then obligate them to a maintenance of that berm, which is right now outside of their property.
So, so by moving the property line six feet back, the berm would be within your property line?
Yes, it's a matter of, that was, they'd have to maintain that process. Otherwise, the development's obligation for the drainage system.
On that plan, what is the distance between the proposed wall and the proposed new lot line? Is it six feet? Is it?
Um, excuse me, um, on the rear, five point nine feet.
Six eight.
Five point nine?
Five point six eight.
Five point six eight, correct.
Five point six eight.
Yeah. Could that, that wall, the curve in the wall, specifically where that five point six eight feet is, could that be right in another five feet?
We could potentially put an angle here. Um, Donna, could, could we do, could they move that over and then give the landowner a drain achievement? Could they have to do that with that?
What are you saying?
Well, if you separate, if you separate the slot and then give the land, the landowner and the current owner a drain achievement onto the Girl Scouts property to maintain-
Well, there's already a drain achievement that exists. So you're saying that you want to move the property line five more feet so that you, the Girl Scouts would have part of the basin?
Correct, but it would be, uh, it would be a proposed eas, well, it'd be an easement that would, um, make, make the landowner-
Yes, but the, the consideration is, is having part of the basin of the Girl Scouts property creates a liability.
Okay, let me, let me, let me just ask this, okay? And I'll talk to the architect, okay? Where the proposed property line is now, okay? How far back could we move the property line where the berm would still be on the other side of the property line?
I think, I think they were right at the toe of that berm because-
All right, so-
That's why, that's why that-
Okay, all right, so that's one thing. Now, that wall that's between the property line and the road, okay, that wall right there, okay? At the low, at this, at the narrowest point, it's five point six eight feet and it needs to be ten feet, okay? My question is, is there any possible way that you could take that wall and move it in five feet? And that'll give you your ten feet of, of setback?
That, that has been looked at for the, again, we hate to have it driven by the cookie delivery, but it is the truck maneuvering. And then we've also presented it to the town for safety vehicles and that they can drive completely around the building, which was a, a very positive feedback that we received from, from all emergency vehicle.
Okay. All right, does the board have anything else? Anybody? Okay, so you have another vote sheet?
Yeah.
Okay, there's gonna be two votes, okay? The first vote will be on the parking and the second vote will be on the setback. So we need two vote sheets, ladies and please. You have any questions?
Thank you.
All right, so we'll do the, the parking first.
All right, so this first one, I think I wrote it down here. The first one that we're discussing is whether or not to grant a variance under a specific section of the bylaw. And I, I wanna be clear on what this section is so that everybody knows what we're voting on.
Section five point two point C.
Section five point two.
Point C.
Um, no, it's actually in B. It's in the off-street parking section.
Okay.
Subsection two of section B.
Okay.
Um, yeah, location and dimensions. And then it's under sub subsection C entitled setbacks, where it says in, is, in business and zoning districts, all parking spaces shall be provided only at the side or to the rear of the buildings.
Right.
But not within the required side and rear yard setback.
Okay, so you have all of that?
Um, well, it, just, just hang on a second here. Um, because, so this is, you know, a little bit different because, so first of all, we're talking about, we've been mentioning that that's actually the front, not the side or the rear, okay? Um, so we're really asking for a variance that they're allowed to put parking at the front as opposed to the side or the rear. And then there is a second issue, which is they're, they're also, they're not just asking to be able to park in front, they're also asking for the ability to have parking within that fifty-foot setback. So there's sort of two issues that really need a variance associated with this proposed parking plan. Is, is that accurate? So, so everybody knows sort of what we're voting. Um, there's the section there and the section as to, let's see, the, the minimum yard setback as well, with the front being fifty feet.
Let's just do, let's just do the, uh, parking first and then we'll do the second one. Okay.
Yep, yep. So this, so this is as to, just, just so people are clear.
Okay, so say that again.
Move, allowing parking in the front of the building and also allowing parking within the front setback.
Right.
Okay, those are the, those are the two things that we're voting on.
And that's your motion?
So the, the motion is, all right, so I make a motion to grant a variance, um, as to, you know, as to, as to those two aspects, as to parking in front of the building and as to parking within the front setback.
Does everybody understand the motion?
A second.
All right, so-
Yes.
Okay, all in favor of granting the variance under the motion? Say yes.
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 All opposed, say no. No. So the vote is four to one, Toby. And just so you know, you needed a super, superior, a super majority, which means that four people had to either approve it, had to approve it, and you got your four.
We are going to vote on whether we can reduce that to 5.68 feet for a rear setback for that, that wall of four feet or, or less that was described. So I will make that motion.
Right? So you have a second?
Second.
Okay. Okay, so everybody understands the motion, okay? All in favor of approving the variance for the setback to be 5.68 feet? Say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, say no. No. Vote's four to one, Toby. Okay? Now, you do realize that you will have to go to the planning board to, for the parking because you have more than 15, okay?
Correct.
They're probably, more than likely, they're gonna ask you how many of those 41 are gonna be handicapped. And I believe that there's a...
There's a formula for that.
There's a formula for that, so make sure that you have that in hand.
Yep.
And the other thing too is, you're gonna have to do an A and R. Now, Mr. Frieden, seeing as you're here as a member of the planning board, can they do both of these at the same time or would the board, or would they have to do them separately?
I was thinking about that. It might be able to be done at the same time, like a development, like when you have one piece of property or a development that breaks up into a whole bunch of lots, you might be able to do it at the same, but I'm not sure.
Because I know, I know...
Certainly, it's a meeting.
I know that one of the, one of the things was, is that the planning board wanted to make sure that the variances were approved by the ZDA before they did anything, okay? So now, both of these have been approved. The only, the main one, they're both of a concern, but I just want to make sure, I know that there's a couple of other things that they have to, they have to decide to review, correct?
Yeah, no, they don't, the whole...
So, so I didn't, I just want to make sure so that they're clear on what they need to do.
Actually, if you, just, once the minutes are approved or whatever, you want to do, just so that there's a, a record of the decision.
Right. Oh yeah, we'll send, we'll send you that, okay? But it's gonna be, we have 14 days to do a decision, to write the decision. You'll go to town clerk's office and there's a 21-day period for anybody that wants to appeal it. And once all of that is, is done, then Toby will send you a copy that there were no appeals to these two variances. Then, at that time, you can go to the planning board. I think that, Mark, Mark, they don't need, they don't need to have the decision approved for the two variances, they can come to the A and R, do the A and R before that, right?
Yes.
Yeah, they could do the A and R three weeks ago, but it's just at risk of an appeal, that's all.
Well, see, they still, they haven't owned the property yet. They were waiting for this to see how...
Well, right, I mean, but the owners could do the A and R, but it was just a...
We haven't submitted...
Okay. So they can do the A and R before?
Public hearing.
The A and R doesn't need a public hearing, but the...
Right, but the site plan review does, but I don't know that we have to wait for the full appeal period to do it.
You certainly do not, it's just, but if you...
It's conditional.
It's in your...
Yeah, the planning board is not gonna, they're not gonna do anything about the parking until they have something from us saying that there is no...
Okay, we certainly couldn't approve the plan until we have the decision that...
That was the purpose of coming here first.
Right, the decision will come before...
Thanks for your all setup. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You need some form.
Yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Sorry, went too fast.
I feel like this is more of a, sort of, it's great, it's...
I do, we... Great.
Yeah. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Another, another spot filled.
It's true.
And I'm glad you just made that bill for us on Friday. You said this, this, this is not a front setback, is it? No, no.
Excuse me, we're still in the meeting, could you please take it out into the hallway? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. All right, we'll wait for... When to come back, they'll sign those. Okay. Here is my agenda.
Sign your line from white.
Chris, you got an agenda there?
Yeah.
Okay, let's see, okay, all right. We did two public hearings, okay? The next thing is, okay, at our last meeting, we discussed about ZDA fee schedules, okay? And we decided we approved it. Unfortunately, we did not close the public hearing, so we had to bring it back, okay? So Raj, do you want to read that?
Don't have to read it, it's just...
It's open, yeah, most into close.
Motion to open.
Okay.
Most into open the public hearing.
reopen, maybe we can close.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to, to continue the public hearing.
Continue, yeah.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now, it's been brought to my attention, Mr. Woodkiss had a suggestion, or he wanted to discuss something about the fees. So Charlie, go ahead.
I thought that in 2002, I think they, they made up the price list for all the, all the things that we're, we're dealing with. And then, it's 2018 and it's like 30% more that we have to, we, we have to pay out for everybody. And I think a percentage-wise, and more, more or less, about $100 added on to each, each bill, whatever you call those things.
Fees.
The fee, yeah, 100 bucks a piece add on to, for inflation and everything like that. So the prices really stand the same, but maybe there'll be less, less people coming to us, but that's okay.
I think I agree with you, we do need the revenue, we do need the money.
Yeah.
But at the same time, you know, at this time, everything is increasing.
Yeah.
So I think, you know, maybe we, it'll be mindful, just keep the way it is. It's, it's already a $50, some of them are $100.
50, no, no, 100.
Some of them are $100 more.
Yeah.
So I, I, I think this increases, you know, we don't get too many cases, so this increase is reasonable, so maybe we can revisit in a year or two. So that time, you know, will be good. So if we keep on increasing the fees, you know, that may not be good. Board of Health increased the fees, Assessor increased the fees, what else? Now we are proposing the senior center, there will be another property tax increase. So the, what are we doing, you know, again, zoning board increasing fees? I think let's keep this way for now.
Okay.
Maybe we can revisit it again. That increase is fine. We are, no, we are already increasing the fee.
Okay.
It's a $50 increase along the bar.
That's what you think, it's 50.
Yeah.
The, the lady is charging a ton of money every time.
Charlie is proposing $100.
They've asked him the question, it costs us 100 bucks.
Okay, so right now, the current fee for the variance is $350. And what we...
What was the older fee? Maybe you can read both.
That is, that is the old.
No, the older increase.
Is the old. Okay, the variance was $350, the proposed fee was to raise it to $400, okay? A special permit, except an accessory apartment or home occupation, was $350, proposed fee would be $400. An accessory app, special permit for an accessory apartment or home occupation is currently $200, we'll raise that to $300. Administrative appeal currently is 350, proposed fee is 400. Comprehensive permit is $500 plus $100 per unit, right now. Proposed is to raise that to 550 plus 150 per unit.
I think, you know, we could go a little more on the comprehensive permit.
Okay, so what do you say, we go from 500 plus 100 per unit to 600 plus 200 per unit?
Yeah, I could go there, because, you know, those comprehensive permits are bigger guys, developers, they make a much more profit, rather than...
Well, I, and I would imagine there's a lot more work, not just for the board.
Yeah, for the comprehensive. And also, it takes a, it's not going to be done in one meeting, it's, it'll be like several meetings.
Right.
You know, we are still dealing with the comprehensive permit.
That's a lot of minutes.
All right, Toby, so you want me to read that so you can put it into the, into the minutes? Okay, so the, the new fee for the variance will be $400.
Right.
Okay?
Yeah, I have that.
The new fee for a special permit, except an accessory apartment or home occupation, will be $400.
Mm-hmm.
The special permit for an accessory apartment or home occupation would be $300. Administrative appeal would be $400. And the comprehensive permit would be $600 plus $200 per unit, okay?
Yeah.
All right, so, do I have a motion?
Most into approve the...
Okay, we first, we, we close the public hearing.
Yeah, we have to close the public hearing. Most into close the public hearing.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, okay. Public hearing is now closed, Toby.
Do you have a comment?
Do you have a comment? Go ahead.
Just a point of order. Yeah, I mean, you opened it, did it, closed it, poosh.
Well, last, last meeting, we didn't have anybody here, so...
They never leave more here.
No, I mean, if you have a comment, make it.
We figured one of the three of you would have spoken up, so...
Most into approve the fee increase as mentioned.
Okay, second. Okay, sorry.
Who seconded?
Take your pick.
Okay, hearing the motion and the second, no, no other further discussion, all, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so Toby, what I would like is tomorrow is to send this to Karen.
We need a vote to sit.
And to, and to the town, town clerk. And the town administrator.
Do we need a vote sheet for that?
No, no, because this is, this is internal. We don't need a vote sheet on that, we just voted. So it was fine.
When is this supposed to take effect?
March first.
March first.
Okay. All right. Okay, now, declaration of covenant for home occupation useful. Mr. Olson, I'm gonna turn that over to you because you had some concerns. I made the, the suggestion the last time on what I felt and I added something to it.
Yeah, I thought your change was, was fine.
Okay, all right. So basically, what happens is we had a home occupation bylaw. Unfortunately, we didn't have a declaration of covenant for the home occupation, okay? So we had to create one. So we reached out to town council, they sent us a draw, a copy from another town. Mr. Olson was nice enough to take it and revamp it so that it meets our needs, okay? There was one, there was two things that I didn't see on there that I thought were kind, were, were important. And it's the second, it's the bottom of the second page and then all of the, the third page. And basically what it is, is that the property owner will come in and sign it and he'll put it, print his name, all the board members will, will sign it. And then the property owner, the petitioner, will then go to the registry of deeds and there's a copy over here and he'll have it stamped and notarized by someone there and then he'll bring a copy of it back to us.
Now, do I, if I was going to give this to him tomorrow...
Okay, what we're gonna do, do you have a clean one?
Um, yeah.
Okay, with all, with the, with the, with the changes that I just said?
Yes.
Okay, so what we'll do is, we'll sign over here on the clean one and then when he comes in, okay, you can help him fill out the top part, okay? And then he can do, put his, the signature and he'll print his name on, on the next page. And then he'll take this to the registry of deeds, have them stamp it and notarize it and then date it, they'll, they'll know what to do with this. And then he'll bring this back to us.
So I have to be with him to fill this out? I mean, I can't fill out what I can fill out and then have just...
Well, he's gonna have to come in, he's gonna have to, he's gonna have to come in to see you anyways to get the form.
Well, I was gonna maybe leave it with the town clerk, but I guess not.
Okay, no, that, that's fine, if you want, if you can leave it with the town clerk, that's fine. But, let's see, all right. Okay, do you feel comfortable filling out the top part of it with the date, the name of the business, the address, and then you can leave the printed, the print the owner's name?
Well, I mean, he can, he can actually fill all that out himself.
All right, well, he's probably gonna have to know the date, so put tomorrow's date on it.
And the date of the special permit, that's the date of the decision, right?
Right.
But I just have, I have to get the signatures here.
Okay. And you'll have to put in the date of the special permit?
Right.
Okay, yep, so before we leave tonight, make sure that we all bring it now, make sure that everybody, everybody signs it. Okay. All right, so that takes care of that. Okay. I'm just gonna go over these, I'm still working on the accessory, accessory apartment bylaw. I've reached out to the water department and...
Could you just pass this to us again?
Yep.
I guess we'll get this to them, but...
Okay, you don't have to sign those. Oh wait, does Nate have the signers? Is he here for that meeting?
Um...
As long as we have four votes on each...
Four should be fine.
Yeah, four should, okay, so Charlie, you need to sign it? Okay. Let me know when you're ready.
Yep, no, I'm all set.
Okay, so accessory apartment bylaw, I'm working on that. I've already reached out to the building inspector, he's helped me out a lot. And I just need to put it all together. Once I get it all together, I'll bring it, I'll make, I'll bring it to the building inspector, have him review it. Alongside that, I will send it to every member of the board, have them review it, look it over and send comments back. And then hopefully, at our March or April meeting, we'll be able to discuss it and vote on it. And once we vote on it, then we'll send it to the big guy, the planning board, for their approval.
Probably.
I'd like to try to, what I'm trying to do is, I'm trying to, trying to work this out because I know that you have to get public hearings and all of that. I know that May is definitely out of the question, but I'm hoping that this is gonna get on at least the October of this year, the town meeting.
You give us a done argument, it's way easier.
Yep. Well, we're gonna send it to you with, you know, that we approved it and then it's gonna be up to you to review it. If you don't like what you see, you send it back to us, we'll discuss it.
We'll have the public hearing too.
Right. So the only comment I would make there is, because again, it's, it's the planning board who sort of owns making new bylaws, it's not this board.
Right.
So I would say, you know, it's fine to present them, you know, with something that we can agree on. I don't know that we need to vote on it because it's more a vote for the planning...
Well, as long as, as long as we, because they're gonna, because I know what they're gonna say, they're gonna ask me, well, how did, how did the board look at it?
Right, right, yeah.
Okay, the...
That's yours, just needs your John Hancock.
Are you gonna have any public hearings?
No, you are.
You are.
Oh, as if you were.
This is part, this is, no, this is part of the list that you had sent out to us last year about, about all of this, okay? Okay, update on the Aquifer zoning bylaw, okay? Just to refresh everybody, we had a special permit that was proposed to us about a piece of property on Prospect, on Prospect Street. It was in the Aquifer district.
making new bylaws. It's not this board.
Right.
So I would say, you know, it's fine to present them, you know, with something that we can agree on. I don't know that we need to vote on it because it's more a vote for the planning.
Well, as long as, as long as we, because they're gonna, because I know what they're gonna say. They're gonna ask me, well, how did, how did the board look at it?
Yeah, right.
You know, so, okay, the, um...
That's yours, just needs your John Hancock.
Actually, are you gonna have any public hearings?
No, you are.
You are.
As if you were.
This is part, this is, no, this is part of the list that you had sent out to us last year. About, about all of this, okay? Okay, update on the Aquifer zoning bylaw, okay? Just to refresh everybody, um, we had a special permit that was proposed to us about a piece of property on Prospect Street. It was in the Aquifer district, we did not approve it, okay? So now I'm re, I have reached out to the water department to help write a bylaw that would protect us in the Aquifer zoning because there's nothing in this bylaw right now that specifically controls what can happen in the, in the Aquifer by, uh...
Is this the frontage regarding?
Yes, that they have to have a hundred and fifty feet, they have to have fifty thousand square feet. No ifs, ands, buts, or whys about it.
Yeah, so the only thing I would say on this one is because there is pending litigation related to that, that I, I'm a little uncomfortable discussing that in an open meeting.
And beginning with the truck thing, the truck weight thing while there was pending litigation, yeah, it's just a factor.
But see, the thing is, is that this would not affect that.
Right, but you, you could see...
Well, I, I understand, yeah, I can understand what you're saying. I can understand.
They're bringing up colorful conversations at the public hearing.
Okay, the next thing is, is that there was, if I can find it, there was a letter in here from, about the cost certification. Let me see if I can find it. Anybody know, anybody see it? Yeah, for Afro Terrace. Okay, all right. So this is about Afro Terrace, okay? Mass Housing Partnership was able to finalize the cost certification for that project, which was a forty B project. And the developer was within the twenty percent. He was at fourteen point seven eight percent, which means that he doesn't over town anything, okay? So they sent us a letter to the Affordable Housing and to the ZBA. And the board of selectmen reached, also did, reached out to this. And it's been approved, and this is a letter from, from John Hadley, the chair of the selectmen, saying that, you know, we're all set, and thank you for the review and the comments. So just to let you know that, that this is now a done deal over there. Only took forever to get it done. Okay, now, one thing I found out, and I should have realized this a long time ago, but I didn't. Because after I see how other, how other departments do it. Discussing the change policy and mailings where petition will responsible for sending out abutters notices, okay? In the past, Toby's done all of that, okay? So now what we wanna do is we wanna change that. We're gonna have, it's gonna now be the responsibility of the petitioner to get the list of the abutters and send out all the notices, certified mail with a return receipt. When that comes back, they will turn the return receipts back into Toby. Toby will have a list of the abutters, and she'll double check to make sure that everybody is there. Then when they come for the hearing, when the hearing is over, the decision is made, the appeal is done, the letter that goes out to the abutters saying that the decision was either approved or disapproved, it'll be the responsibility of the, of the petitioner to send those letters out, return receipt, certified mail with a return receipt. When those come back, they'll give it to Toby. That way we'll have a record that people did receive it before the hearing and that they received it after the decision was made.
I totally agree, but once the project is approved, why they bother to send the letter?
Because the...
What's the hold on us? How are you going to implement, if they didn't send it, what are you going to do?
They, they, well, the thing is, is that, you know, if we don't send it out, right? Then all the abutters are gonna say, well, did it get approved or whatever?
Yeah, just if it is approved or not, just go ask the zoning board.
Yeah, but the only thing is that there's still that appeal period, so...
Yeah, but it, it, after the twenty days, anyway, automatically they get the letter from the town clerk. They won't be going to you, or they're not coming back to the...
They don't get a letter from town clerk. They get it from Toby. The letter comes to...
I think, you know, I am fine with the...
Maybe you should tell them that the twenty day appeal period only starts once you get those tickets back that they sent to the lawyers.
What do they do in a planning board?
We don't do that part. We don't have, we don't send our approval to the abutters.
Yes, but the initial notification, Melanie does, right?
No, no, it's exactly what he said, but we don't have that, and we don't have that...
I think, you know, the second part, let Toby does it. The first part, first part is fine with the...
Yeah, the only thing that I wanna check in, in the bylaws is, is I seem to recall reading something that there is in fact an obligation to notify the neighbors when the decision is made. But I wanna read to see, is that obligation, as it's written, on the petitioner or is it on the board?
Okay, so there was an, so Toby sent out an email to Nancy, okay? Nancy Lucia. And she basically said that this is the way that things are done, okay? And she also made another comment about the postage, is that it's a ZBA decision, not a board of selectmen or a TA decision. Honestly, having the applicant send the notice out certified is the ideal. That way, no questions on who actually received the notice.
I agree, the first part is okay. First part, when we notify there is a public hearing, that part, let the applicant send it. Whereas, once the decision is made, I don't think so it's too chasing them whether they send it or whether, you know...
Do you want me to send the decision?
Yes.
So they'll have to give me one set of onglos?
Okay, so then why don't we just have, just have the petitioner send out, send out the decision with no, no postage and with no certified mail? Just let them, let them send it out.
They are, they are not, no, 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 you are not, you are missing my point. Once, until it is approved, they have to come before the board. That's why they are doing the work. Once it is approved, what is the incentive for them? To send their ZBA decision tomorrow? They won't send it to you.
Because he's in the board.
My suggestion for the incentive would be to say your twenty day appeal period doesn't start until the evidence that you sent the decision to all the abutters comes in.
Yeah, but, agreed, but once, today, you know, we made the decision on the variance, right?
Right.
So that twenty day period starts from tomorrow.
Can you change that?
Well, it starts from a written decision.
When the return decision. But if they have to send it in mail, certified mail, some of the certified mails goes in the next day or three days or ten days. Someone will be on vacation for twenty days. The certified may, may not be, the, the recipient won't be getting it for, say, ten, fifteen days. So they are literally waiting...
But it would be the applicant's risk because it's their twenty day period that has to start.
Agreed, totally agree.
And that's the thing, I mean, that's the thing that I wanna look into because I think there's a section of Mass General Law that says that that twenty day period will start when the written decision is, is certified by the town clerk. I think there's some...
But it sounds like we need to table that, Toby.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so let's take that.
I'll be much more comfortable sending the decision.
So Toby's gonna table that?
This is our decision. Not the applicant's, so by the board, yeah.
Any other, is there any other miscellaneous mail paperwork that we need to sign?
What about that, one of the mail you received regarding Dr. Tajin's?
Okay, what happened with Dr. Tajin, okay? Because we did not go in December...
Can you explain a little more?
Okay, what happened was in December, a notice was sent to the ZBA
Saying that there was a court date to Dr. Tajin, okay? This is for the contain, removal of the containers.
Right, he was fine, he was fine, okay.
Fine regarding the removal of the containers.
So nobody showed up for the, nobody showed up for the hearing, okay? The building inspector, inspector did not get a copy of it, okay? So he got a notice from the, from the court saying that, that if he wanted, that there was no decision because nobody showed up, and if he wanted to reapply, he could reapply, which he didn't. And on January thirty first of this year, the building inspector and I both went to court. The court ruled in favor of Dr. Tajin. It's proven out because they said that notice was given back in December, you didn't show up. That's not, that's basically not our problem, it's the town's problem. So now it lays with the building inspector and town administrator and the board of selectmen.
So basically, the building inspector didn't so through the court?
Because he never, he was never given a notice. It came directly to the ZBA.
The second question is, why you didn't go?
Because I asked, and I was told that I didn't need to go. That was just an information. So I said, okay. So that's, that's the thing with, with that. So now it's in the hands of, of the board of selectmen and the, and the building inspector and what they wanna do. And we're out of it. Okay, the last thing is, and then we're gonna hit the road, and we're gonna make it before ten o'clock. Okay? All right, the review of the ZBA forms, okay? We are not, we, if, if it's okay with the board, we're not gonna do anything with the forms. We are going to outsource it to Judy Barrett, who is a forty B specialist. I've already talked to the town administrator. We've already reached out to Judy. And she has agreed to do everything changed, look through all our forms, redo them, take care of all the comprehensive permit rules and regulations. She's gonna do that. She's also gonna send it, write up something about chapter forty A. So what she's gonna do is gonna be a complete, everything that is going to be standard because none of these forms and anything, she did look over, from what I understand, she did look over the comprehensive permit rules and regulations, and she said it definitely needs to be changed. And that was done back in two thousand and thirteen. So with the permission of the board, and it's, it's gonna cost, and Anita's like, told me that all I need to do is get approval from the board, and it'll be okay. So it's, it's gonna, it's a hundred and fifty dollars an hour, and she said it's not gonna be more than, no more than twenty hours. Anything less than twenty hours, she's only gonna charge us for the hours that she does it. And I think this is, I personally feel this is the best way to go because she is probably, she's the one that wrote the forty B change, the book, the, the new, um, bylaw for the, for the forty B. So I feel very confident, I've had dealings with her in the past. And I feel confident that she will do us justice. So that way we don't have to worry about, you know, doing this.
But it sounds like, so you're saying that she, she's gonna update the, the forty B related documents, but also the others? The special permits, the variances?
Yeah, everything.
So she, she has experience?
Yeah, we already sent her all the copies.
With, has she done this before in another town?
Oh, yeah.
She has?
Yeah.
Okay.
So you don't have money. The town administrator said all I need is approval from the board.
Agreed, but it's, the money is like twenty hours times a hundred and fifty dollars, it'll be...
Three thousand dollars.
Three thousand dollars.
Or less.
So ZBA has no money. You borrowed money from them.
I understand that. Like I said, the town administrator told me all I needed to do was get approval from the board.
I agree, but do we need to do it, is it an emergency one?
Yes, because it hasn't been done since two thousand and two. This is two thousand and eighteen. You know, and I don't know when the, you know, these forms, you know, if you read the forms, some of them don't even, the information is not even there anymore. So let's, let's get it done.
You know, the ZBA has a negative balance, and on top of that, I don't know. I'm, I'm not comfortable in putting another negative balance of another four thousand.
It's not, I don't know where the money's coming from. All I was told by the, by the town administrator is just to get approval from the board to do, to go forward. That's all I was asked to do. That's all I'm asking to do.
Again, where the money comes from?
I don't know.
You could have asked the same person.
Well, you know, to be honest with you and to be blunt, I'm really not concerned. I just wanna get this done, you know? And this is, and if this is the best way to do it, then let's get it done. So all I'm asking is, is if you agree. If not, then we're back to one, and if another forty B comes in...
So I, I like it, I like it, I like it, but the only problem is, you know, if, since we don't have the funds, it'll be much more useful if you know where the source of the funding. If it is that town gives the funding, I don't care.
Well, what about this? I mean, it's, I think the biggest risk in all of this is the forty B stuff.
Yeah.
What if we said, okay, for the forty B stuff, we'll handle the other stuff, at least cut down on the hours? What do you think?
I think we should get it all done at once.
That, that's it, because none of us have the time to do it.
Well, I'm, I'm just saying, the other forms, I don't know that they're...
Yes, they are, they are. She reviewed them. She said that they, they need to be updated. Like I said, it's been sixteen years since these forms have been updated, you know? There's things in there that I, that I read that I made changes to that don't even apply anymore. And there's things now, you know, things change over the course of the year. Let's just get it done, and then we're set. I mean, if you don't wanna do it, then, then that's fine. I'll just, I'll send an email to, to the town administrator and say, the board decided not to do it.
So maybe can we hold off until the next meeting? The only one thing, maybe you can make sure, so the, where the funding is coming from?
Okay.
Is it supposed to be the ZBA? So if the funding is from the town, fine.
I'm not concerned about the funding, okay? I was, I, because I was told, if you're concerned about the funding, then I'm gonna give you authorization to go ahead and talk to the town minister about where the funding is gonna come.
Yeah, okay, just hold off until the next meeting.
Okay, so Toby, table that to a notch, okay?
Just change the motion. Do it if it doesn't come from the ZBA budget and approve it. It seems like that's what you want to do.
Actually, that's a good suggestion.
Okay, so future agenda items, okay? We received two special permits, our request for two special permits. One is for one oh seven Central Street, which is gonna be an accessory apartment. And the other one is three thirty nine Maple Street, which is going to be, um... The property owner right now is going to be selling the land to a developer, a contractor. And he's gonna take the property and divide it into three lots. And each lot will be over a hundred feet frontage, but less than a hundred and twenty. And I've already explained to them that, um, that the owner of the property is the one that has to apply for the special permit. They will be the ones that'll be here for that meeting in March along with the developer. I've also informed them that when the owner of the property sells the land, the property, to the developer or contractor, then the contractor needs to come back to the ZBA and apply for, I forget what it's called.
Amended?
I, amended decision. Is that what it is?
Who's the owner?
Yeah. The owner of the property is Shaw. It's a gentleman and his mom.
It's a new one, right?
And his mom, yeah. This will be in March. I'm just letting you... I know, well, they're here.
My only question, since they're both special permits, is, and we've run into this issue in the past, is that thirty-five day period that we have to give those three boards notice, planning board, board of health, and con con? Have they been notified yet?
Not yet.
Okay, so, so that means that we're not gonna be able to close if we don't get something from all three of them?
I understand, I understand that. But see, here's the problem, is that there are time, Charlie, Charlie, hold on please, Charlie. Can you hold on please? The problem is, is that a lot of times we send our stuff out to the planning board, and then they don't meet to decide on that until the day before the hearing, our hearing.
I hear you.
You know, so it's, you know, it's, it's kind of a...
It's, it's an unwieldy bylaw, but it's a bylaw in the...
Oh, I, I'm not arguing that point. What I'm saying though is, I, I like to try to give the petitioner, you know, enough time. So when they, when they send the decision, when they send their, their, you know, their write-up to us saying, you know, their thoughts, I'd like the petitioner to have at least a couple of days to review it, not less than twelve hours.
Ideally, I agree with you. I agree with you, but we can only control what we can control.
Well, maybe the planning board needs to have special meetings, you know, to do...
To do a meeting, stop. I don't think so.
I'm done?
All right, and the next meeting is Thursday, March fifteenth at twenty eighteen, uh, twenty eighteen, and it'll be at seven o'clock. And like I said, we'll, we have a couple of things that are being pushed off the line, and then we have two public hearings, okay?
Okay.
Want to thank Andrew for coming tonight. It's greatly appreciated. Toby will keep in touch with you. We never know what's gonna happen with Mr. Orsiani. There may be a possibility that we may need you in March. I don't know for sure.
I'm planning on being here anyway.
Okay. The last thing I have, and it's on a personal note. One of our associate members, Mr. John Benson, is deployed to the Middle East for a year. He is in the reserves in the Army JAC Corps. And so just want everybody to keep him and his family in their prayers and hopefully that he'll be safe and sound and come home to us. And I don't want, I asked for his address, and I will be sending him, you know, a mail constantly. As a veteran who spent twenty years in the military and knows what it's like to be away from your family and friends for long periods of time, and the most important thing of the day is when they make the announcement, mail call. So... So, if anybody else would like their, his address, or send him a note, I would be greatly, I would be more than happy to, to give it to you, so... He said, John?
I think you should send him the correspondence from like every news minutes, you know?
Can I make one small public announcement?
Yeah, go ahead.
So, this is regarding our special town election. It's 27th Tuesday. It's, election is the first one. And the second is, Wednesday, 28th is our town meeting. So, since our elections are coming, election is coming before the town meeting, so it's, I would strongly suggest, you know, maybe you could attend, try to attend one of those information session.
Is this, is the only thing on the target?
So, only, yeah, this is only one, uh...
No, there's two items on the warrant.
There are, another item, warrant item is like the pay scale for the town clerk.
Okay, but it's the, this is the second round of funding for the senior center?
Second round of funding for the senior center. We do have a definite final price tag on the project.
When did you rearrange it so the meeting went after?
Okay, so, earlier, earlier, we were supposed to have a meeting on 26th Monday, town meeting. 27th election on the snow day is 28th for the town meeting. Uh, we were supposed to have the select board meeting last Wednesday. It was canceled due to the snow, and there was some official miscommunication.
Posting dates?
The posting day, 14-day posting period, when it, when we had the meeting on Monday, we have a one day less of 14 days. So, we, we do want to have this town meeting, town election. So, that's the reason...
You want to put out the dates for the...
So, we have the senior center information sessions. This Saturday, 10:00 AM in the town hall. And Tuesday, 3:00 PM, senior center. Wednesday, February 21st, 6:00 PM, town hall. Thursday, 22nd, Feb., 3:00 PM, Angel Brook, and the 6:00 PM library. And then Friday, we have a, Friday, the 23rd, 3:00 PM, Hillside. And then Saturday, it's at the police station at 10:00 AM. So, this is another, you can visit the police station too.
But you can also add to the minutes or whatever, that the planning board approved their application last night?
Yeah, the site plan review was almost approved or approved.
Well, I mean, you just wanna add to the, whatever, that, that little public...
Yeah, okay, and the only, the last thing, and this will be the last thing, is that a week ago Friday, Raj and I went to a conference about recreational marijuana at Worcester State College. And one of the things, there was a lot of things that were brought up, but one of the main things is that they suggested that the planning board, the ZBA, border health, border select, they'll get together and start initiating, you know, things...
Spearhead the joint venture.
Yeah, spearhead a joint venture that will be headed...
No, joint committee, that's what I'm...
Right, that would be headed by the planning board. So, the planning board voted last night. They're gonna, they're gonna provide two members, Mr. Freedon and Mr. Anderson. So, from our board, I'll be one of the, I'd like to be one of the representatives, and it's gonna come down to either Mr. Olson...
I'm gonna, I'm going through the select...
Yeah, he has to be on the side. So, it's either Mr. Olson or Mr. Phelan or...
I'll be here.
Okay, alright. So, Toby, make sure that gets in there, that the, the two representatives for the...
Joint committee.
Joint marijuana committee.
Joint weed committee.
Marijuana joint committee.
It's a joint committee about joint ventures.
Yes.
Will be Mr. Femia and Mr. Phelan.
Oh, okay.
Okay, alright. Any other thing, anything else? Anything from any other boards or anything? Okay, motion to adjourn?
Motion again, second.
Okay, all favor say aye?
Aye.
Thanks again.